Can you hear me? Can you guys hear me talking?
Yeah.
Yes, okay, I can hear you guys. It's just maybe a little bit quiet.
Yeah.
Well, let's keep it.
Hey, one second, let me go back down here. See this here? Nope. It's not gonna be there. I don't get it.
That's odd.
I can, I can hear you, Elena, but I can't see anything. Yeah, I don't have my split cam open yet. I don't have the cameras going. I'm just trying to figure out the audio so it comes across the TV so everyone can hear. Right now, I just have you coming across my computer. Oh, got it. Um.
It should be P C H D line two, right?
Yeah. Usually.
Elena, I couldn't, it would not work for our C G R meetings either.
One over the other.
Yeah.
I really feel like this is. I know it's just.
This one is because that one's.
I felt like it snapped in there. So that felt like it snapped in there.
It is like this one. Whatever else.
Do you have that remote? Oh, sorry.
Yeah, because that one's. But it's a separate site and it's really for that bridge. While the open space part is set, that's that's under consideration. Because I think the garage and the refuge, you know, the trash recycling cover should happen anyway. And it's for adjacent property. It's not for web. So that's what I remember. Cause I also looked at them as like. If some gateway could be. Or does that one was more was kind of same straightforward because it is just.
I honestly have no idea. I just know a button. I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. I don't know anything about it. I just know what cords need to go where. And usually my go to fix it is to just restart the computer and everything comes back up dandy, but the fact now that that's not even want to connect.
That's why.
My god.
So records is seventy five hundred on their application and it's real. And just by the phone there, because I don't, I don't know which one is the main square on that property. Um, but they own it, so they're able to make that request and that could be. No, 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 nothing with open space there. Yes. Hey, Jim.
Still nothing. We may just have to do it.
May have said the computer speaker to work.
Computer speaker work. We're just gonna have to maybe put that close. The problem is, is if this works, I can hear them over this. Everyone's just gonna have to be quiet. And I can put the mic close to that so people can hear.
So now.
But now this, so the speakers have been working. They're still working. It's the TV and my computer that is not talking for some reason. If this is U S, yeah, it says USB cables have gotten to have something to do with this heavy thing. Oh, my god. Yeah, well, it's out of my control. Yeah. Super frustrating.
It's at your name. It happens everywhere.
I know. Check it out. It blew in there. Both pieces. And then it's the floor. I said that cord runs into the floor. Over to that.
Oh, no.
Now I got that back. So this was doing this to me earlier before I left and I tested everything out and everything was fine and dandy. And I reset the computer and everything came back up and I was like, okay, cool. We're ready to rock and roll.
I saw it. I saw.
Okay, thank you. I swear I tested everything. It's already in the lab.
Well, I can hear you well and I have access to the drive with all the packets. So if you're just very clear about what you're looking at, I'll be able to follow along.
Okay, I think the more concern is if anybody wants to speak, people here cannot hear anything. It's a very.
Oh, I understand.
Yeah, it's super base. He said that it cut out on him though, too.
Where does, you said this table?
Goes into the ground.
Yeah.
To the TV.
Where does it go into the ground?
Right here.
Can we use a different one for the zoom?
I don't have any other reasons to do that.
No, on for Kim.
That one runs underneath the ground of the TV.
No, but what is this?
Well, I can take a look because they're trying, they're trying to over there.
Hello, sir. How are you? Please work. Only try to back on? My anxiety go through the room.
Sometimes don't let the unique and like does it.
No, it's at the end. It's not moving. There we go.
Elena, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Did you grab the speakers out of Kim's office and plug them into that computer? So if somebody wants to talk, it's not just coming across the computer speakers? Might help a little bit.
Think we tried that last time and we couldn't get it to work one time for the board meeting.
Okay.
I can try.
All I know is the audio hasn't been working for me for the last two Zoom meetings. And I noticed that cord got really damaged. I think Michael's pulled it through the floor and trashed the end of it and it hasn't been right ever since.
This one's the audio microphone.
Oh, no. One more.
The microphone can, there's a camera.
Okay, well, that one. There we go. Okay. Then that one, that one. Okay, Heather, try talking.
Can you hear me?
Yes, um.
Turn it all the way.
Okay, do a test again.
Testing, testing.
Okay, that can work. Okay, now let me get my stuff rocking. Okay, that's recording still. Let me get word back open. Oh, my gosh. Thanks, everyone, for the patience. Oh. Okay. That what?
But it's not, it's virtually. I mean, it's. It's available.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, it's on there.
I think that's a bit of circulation versus.
Correct.
When they make that posting, it's available on our thing. We have a timestamp. For that post. It's not that correct. It's not, it's posted on, it's in the paper. To pick up the paper, that would look kind of awesome on the time. So for us, the timestamp is that. Okay, fire insurance or not prior to the time and what we have on each one of those postings is the current and the date that it was accepted by the paper. You're gonna talk about it. You sure? Yeah, we're working on that. So we're working on the overall and start.
I'm also curious if you have online versus circulation.
Yeah.
Excellent look online.
It is.
It posts on.
It's online.
And then they printed it.
Right.
Okay, so it is posted.
It's posted, yes.
Circulation.
Yeah. We tried to do this, this same exact thing when I did my marijuana stuff and legality wise, our attorney said on right there that it was, that there was no. I don't know what it's worth this. We have no TV. So I don't know what to do with that one. Um, or why that's beeping. What is that?
What was this? I never received a phone call. I returned every one of my calls that had a rep on my phone. I was thirty minutes of seeing thirty minutes, every single one. I have never received a telephone. That would be true. J bird at T O G L C O dot com is the approved email and that's where it was sent to.
I think it says speaker. It is. Why is it doing that?
There's no flashing light.
Maybe I'll just leave this on split cam until someone wants to talk. Yes, we are ready when you guys are. I just don't have the TV up here for his presentation because it's not wanting to connect. That is our problem now. But you guys have everything in their packet, correct? Everything's in your packet. So if you guys can follow along with that. Zoom is, yeah, Zoom, we're good to go. Zoom's connected. Yes, they can hear us. They can see us. Everything's fine. They just get correct. They just can't see his packet. And we're recording. Good to go.
Thank you. Thank you, guys, for your take. So we'll go ahead and get started. With the second again item left is a public hearing. Um, I guess before I open the public hearing, I just wanted, because I was listening on Zoom beforehand. Just wanted to sort out, again, the legal notice requirements and if those were met. So I'm not worrying about mailings, something like that was met. It's really the paper, so. The way I understand the code reads, fifteen days prior. I understand it may have been into the paper at a certain time, but the actual publication date was December twenty sixth.
That's the print date. But it's available online. It's published online. And that was done on the twenty third. In the newspaper, on the webpage. Yep. And I have for the publication, everything. I believe it was the twenty third that I sent that in. So.
And instantly. And that's how the town relies on it.
Yep, yep. This day, we did the same exact thing with, uh, when we did the marijuana and town attorney went on record and say, stated there was no.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Don't understand.
Of course.
If we'll go ahead and within the public hearing, we're regrouped to five in consideration of a variance request setback requirement on my file. Well, well, Grand Avenue State's one town on your shirt that we twenty five. I guess, um, question for staff, is it worth opening a public hearing at one time and running these two?
I, I guess that would be up to the commission and the chair. Um, if that would be your direction, the way they're structured is they do, they can stand alone. Um, since this one eight twenty five is a separate property and it's for something separate from the actual leatherwood development project itself. Um, and we do have the two different resolutions. So, um, we can run both concurrently. I think keeping them separate would allow kind of a focus on the garage and trash recycling structure over eight twenty five, which is kind of standalone, separate. And then the leatherwood site and while the leatherwood site has the open space offsite at eight twenty five, that doesn't impact that other variance.
Okay. Though I think the reason I blind line their circuit is because this is basically a catch up to board one. It's not a leatherwood pen, correct?
No, my open spaces.
That's the other end of it. The garage is not.
Right.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and just open up this one public hearing. Turn it over to Sam.
All right, perfect. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Commissioners. Um, so yeah, in lieu of what is up there, I will talk and try and um, explain and describe everything that's in the packets for the public that's here in attendance as well as online. So uh, this is resolution oh two twenty twenty five. And so this is for eight twenty five Lake Avenue, um, eight twenty five Lake Avenue. If you're familiar with the Leatherwood Development Project, which I think a lot of individuals here are, this is located, hey, thank you for passing those out. And so the applicant's team has some copies they're handing out, so you can see a little bit of the context location. Uh, so eight twenty five Lake Avenue is currently. Let me get to elaborate, excuse me, currently zone commercial transitional district and the intent of the commercial transitional district is to be that transition between the commercial or either downtown four properties and the adjacent zone districts. In this case, a lot of residential bases and districts adjacent to it. Um, the current use on the site has some storage. There is some trash recycling dumpsters there. There is some parking that occurs on the site as well. Um, but generally an unimproved site. There's some old fencing around the property as well. It's a pretty narrow lot. Um, and the image of that is included on the front page of the staff memo of where that's located. Um, the planned uses for the site, uh, is the emphasis is on the garage trash recycling components. And then in your packet, you have both a variance request, um, which was working with the applicant, we pulled out the different variances because there were different pieces tied to leatherwood site and this property. So those are emphasized throughout the packet. As well as the preliminary site layout drawings that show the northern half of the site with the part of the garage structure, excuse me, adjacent to the alleyway and Lake Avenue. So the applicant's request is a variance to allow construction of a garage and an overhang structure that extends over trash recycling dumpsters with the thin enclosure. Um, and this would be a setback variance request to the rear and side setbacks. Um, within section twelve to seventeen C of the municipal code, it highlights the minimum setbacks for the commercial transitional district is five foot front setback, which the front of the property is Lake Avenue, more on the south side of the property. The five foot side setback, which is to the east and west of the property along Lake Avenue is that wraps up and around the property and the bait and the adjacent parcel. And then a twenty foot rear setback, which is adjacent to the alleyway. Um, and for context, directly across the alleyway is a commercial district where a lot of those properties are built to the property lines and closer to setback since there is a zero foot setback in the commercial district. Um, I can skip over a couple of the site photos taken today, but, um, again, within your packet, you have the conceptual layout for that northern portion of the site, calling out the three car, three stall garage structure adjacent to the alleyway, the trash and recycling dumpsters adjacent to Lake Avenue as it curves off towards the east around the property. You also have within the packets, um, a kind of a representation of the building structure with kind of the intended materials and design of that structure. Um, as part of staff's analysis, so the public notices, um, were completed with municipal code mailings and as we, we just learned with the posting online with the newspaper and having that available online, um, with this specific variance for the garage structure and the setbacks, we did not receive any comments on this specific variance. Um, for the proposal and staff's analysis, you know, this property is a unique property, um, as identified by staff and kind of looking and analyzing the site is wrapped on three sides with public right of way between alleyway and Lake Avenue, how it laps around the property. Um, so it does kind of create some, some unique constraints and how the property is developed or constructed and how it's used. Um, the, the proposed use with the garage structure and the overhang over the trash and recycling dumpsters, um, seems like a reasonable um, request and use for the site given its proximity to the commercial district, again, being right across the alleyway. This really leads into that notion of what the commercial transitional district is, is being that transition between commercial into the residential area. Um, oftentimes with that twenty foot rear setback had in mind was the notion that that twenty foot were adjacent to residential properties in the back of a lot or adjacent to their lot. So you create that distance between commercial, between residential, where here you have the commercial, you have the alleyway, and then you have this garage structure that will be used for residential, adjacent residential businesses and residential uses, excuse me. Um, this also helps to kind of formalize and clean up a big part of that lot where right now, again, as I mentioned earlier, there's a lot of old fencing, the dumpsters are kind of sitting out there. There's parking that occurs on the site, a little bit more lax. And so this will formalize that, create a little bit more structure and will better tie into the rest of the district in that vicinity. Um, based on the commission's, sorry, I have a transition issue. Based on the commission's considerations, so variance considerations are in section twelve to twenty seven B three of the code. And I'll go through the different considerations for the public's information. So the first consideration is compatibility of the proposed action with the surrounding area. Whether the proposed action is in harmony with the character of the neighborhood, the need for the proposed action, the effect of the proposed action upon future development in the area, the shape, size, topography, slope, soils, vegetation, period is flash. Maybe that's a good sign. Um, and other physical considerations. Whether alternative designs are possible and with due consideration of the. Um, and before the commission, our three, um, potential recommendations, recommendation of approval, recommendation of approval with conditions or recommendation of denial with findings of fact. Um, and with that, complete the staff portion. I know the applicant's representative is present, um, to be able to provide more additional insights into this garage structure at eight twenty five. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, before we invite the applicant up, but any of the members of the commission have questions for snack? We're none. We'll go ahead and invite the applicant up.
Fortune helps. Could we just tell everybody it's the lot next to Dan Scheller's? Find where the bowling alley runs. Just so everyone knows.
Perfect. You bet.
Good evening. From Jim Kreister, I live at eight twenty eight, uh, Grand Avenue, number two oh six, which is the Boardwalk Plaza project. Um, I am the project manager for the Boardwalk Plaza project. I'm just a coroner on that project and I'm also the project manager for Spirit Lake Condos LLC. I am not an owner. I'm simply a project manager and authorized representative of the companies that own those properties. Um, so there's a little bit of history that goes with this garage and this dumpster area. When we were finishing the, um, Boardwalk Plaza project, we have the dumpsters located where if you drive around Lake Avenue and you look at the back of the old bowling alley where the condos go across the the south side, you'll notice there's a landscaping area. That landscape area was always through the planning process going to be where the dumpsters were going to be put. Which is, you know, basically we're going to come up this way to repay him to what sits right in the comments. When we were finishing those up, um, we noticed that Austin, the crap would come and pick up the headlights chime right into those condos. And so I came up with this plan. It's a landscape that area and it put the dumpsters, knowing that this project was down the road across the alley. And so now the dumpsters are onsite here. And staff has run us for some period of time to get that dumpster area cleaned up, enclosed. Um, like they want to try to get all that dumpster out town. And so when we were going through using this area as open space for the Spirit Lake project or the, um, leatherwood project, um, where the dumpsters are at in the stack forty to forty five feet, it seemed that, uh, because of the dumpster project, we can put some additional parking there. We have constructed three additional residential units in three commercial spaces that are behind, right behind Mexican restaurant and a Mexican bar in the plaza. And these garages will be used for those three. We do have parking for them now, but we want something to have storage in place for that. And that's where this whole, uh, idea came from was to put the garages there and then, and then have them a closed dumpster area. So we ran this concurrently with the Spirit Lake project because the open space that we want to use for eight twenty five brand uh, excuse me, eight twenty five lake has a credit towards part of the open space for the leatherwood project. We just put it under. We originally had all the variants compacted into one and staff, uh, Josh lit it up. So it's kind of, it's got the cart before the horse and, and it should be kind of, maybe needs to go together. Um, if approvals are done for the open space, then this may work. If that doesn't happen, it won't work. There will be a sprout. So this is what we're trying to clean that little area up and use it for, for that use. And that's what it is. And as you can see, the diagram. And if you can get into our stuff yet from the plan.
The site here?
Yeah.
I have it pulled up now.
Oh, yeah. So anyway, um, this area is where the dumpster will be lined right now. We had five dumpsters. This summer, there are six. It will go down into your four or five dumpsters that will be contained in, I need to be right on your nature structure here. Then this would be a C M U block walls that will be here. These are standing garages that will be used for the three small condos that are in the front side of the old bowling alley that we're constructing in C O the last year. So except for having open parking, it will be a closed parking. And that's what this is all about. That's the reason we do this. Um, when we did Park Avenue loss project, um, the reason that twenty feet, all of the stuff in the C P zone is supposed to have parking in the rear. That's the way the code reads. And so the back twenty feet is not supposed to have a structure on it. So we have to get a a variance for that because the parking is supposed to be in that back twenty feet or any kind of C P zone. This is zone C T. It's not zone commercial. It's zone commercial transition. And so we got a variance from the planning commission, the end of the board back in two thousand seventeen, I think it was, to cover and put garages over the back of the Park Avenue loss because that would have been open parking. And at the time, the neighbors were somewhat wanting us to cover all that stuff up to feet and then have all their stuff sitting outside. And it's kind of the same process I'm thinking of here. So we got approval and got a variance for that at that time for that project. And that's what we're looking for to do with this. So when we do split these two projects, my plan is, the appropriate plan is to take this tract of land, which will be an open space and be that to the town that will be on the plan. So it's a public park. It's like a dog park. There's a lot, a lot of traffic that goes over Lake Avenue, which everyone here is aware of. And so this, we want, we want to get this into the town's hands and then this will go into, I'm not quite sure how we get it there yet. It'll be an out tract of Boardwalk Plaza, but some of that will be in control of the Boardwalk Plaza project. And then you're only able to take care of this garage area, the dumpsters. So this will be even, you know, the thing with this, will be needed to the town. That's our plan anyway. So I got, do you guys have questions?
Excellent. Um, questions from Peter? You know, the last thing you said, Jim, was my broken, my, not a concern, but a question. You know, the last thing you said, Jim, was my real concern, not a concern, but a question. Um, is I'm assuming the garages will ultimately be accommodated to the, to the board lot, like to those condos. And I was concerned that, that how the open space can be managed, but I, if you divide that, if you subdivide that, think clearly.
Yes. Yeah. And it absolutely, that's the way it'll be. It'll go into the Boardwalk Plaza HOA and then we'll maintain it. And then the open space will be into the town. We will eat, we will separate that. We create a plat where we have that. Now, as far as compatibility, if you go to the west, there's garages in the back twenty feet on the alley with the theater they have next door. There's the, there's a shop and a garage. So they, they are in that back twenty feet of the alley. If you go across the street, um, there's at the historical society, which is a block to the west, even farther. And I know there's lots of people here that know a lot more about that than I do. Um, but they, in the back twenty feet of that, they just created a, uh, the, uh, I'm so sorry. The one, sorry.
Last little story?
Yes, yes. And even farther to the west, there's more buildings in the back twenty feet. So there are structures all along that section of alley from where we are at, all the way to the west with garages and buildings of all sorts of things.
Right. It still looks a lot better than it does now.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Question on subdividing, can you do that and have a legal, do you leave a lot there? Because I mean, are you proposing a lot that's just part of that?
Well, that's one of the things I need to work with the town attorney on. Um, that's a great question, James, because I don't have the answer to that part of it. This will be a legal lot because it's here. Okay, the, the open space, the one on the alley is not. So we're going to have to do, I've done it in the past in other projects. It's like an outtract. And it will be deeded to the, if I'm, um, so it will be, let's say, track A will be deeded to the, uh, uh, the end of the Boardwalk Plaza, which is Majestic Corner. And then the, the HOA would have that. So it would have the alley right away, but it would be controlled as the HOA. Short of that, we'll have to figure out a different maintenance way to get that handled in part of the HOA if it's going to be in control of the town, the park area. I don't have the answer yet, but I will get that answer. Somehow we can make it work.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
So for the additional residential units in the Boardwalk Plaza, does that change the open space? Imagine it would change the open space requirement.
No, we went through all of that when we permitted it a couple of years back. Yeah, all of that stuff was meant when we did all that.
And if you had that.
Excuse me.
portion of that lot, um, has open space and you've deeded to the town. Uh, and I guess we have to work that out as an arrangement requirement, there'd be arrangements in the town.
Well, it's part of the town, the original plat, from eighteen hundreds, so it wouldn't be an arrangement.
Yeah, okay. So if it's needed, it would be, and then, um, it would be this town open.
Yes, town park open space, however you, you guys would love, however it needs to be.
In that, uh, document of deed transfer, then it would also have some stipulation about what kind of improvements you're doing on the three yards of trees or other landscapes.
Absolutely. We're going to bring that to you in the, uh, the review process of the, uh, we'll work with.
Development plan process?
Yes, with limited plan process, which will be in a few weeks from now. We'll bring that to you guys and say, here's what we propose to, to, you know, what I envision is a a, a few really nice of those wrought iron picnic tables with the plastic coating on them. Um, you know, whether round or square, a couple of those and some trees and, and some ground cover. And then parking, um, Commissioner Burke brought up in our meeting, it was either Mayor Jim about if we do go to this, when we had a meeting between the down board and the, and playing commission in this room, uh, she brought up the fact that if we're going to try to do that with open space, she would like to see some additional parking. And so I'll talk about that right now. Okay. Is there any way to pull that up and over?
That's the only problem I have.
Anyway, you guys, I, I passed these out. I had them for the planning commission to pass it out. But if you look under, you'll see there are some parking spaces. And I'll give this to the, this one that I've got. And you'll notice on the north end of the open space, there's a, a gap where there's no parking spaces. We do plan to have additional spaces and there are seven of them. But we want to leave a gap on the north end of the open space so that people can get into the park off Lake Avenue and then on the south east corner of the open space, there'll be another gap where there's no parking, so we can get out of the park. Uh, so when town gets super busy, these spaces will be taken up.
You got it here?
Trying to get it for you. Trying to zoom in. It's just being a little slow.
See that here?
I'm, I'm getting there. I'm getting.
From the west of the lake, they have a way to get into the park. And then, and then they will have a way.
There you go. I'll stop there.
Thank you, guys. They didn't have a way to get out here. Um, right now, there's all kinds of stuff in store, giving kind of right away and on the lot from the previous order. All of that can hopefully go away at some point. Um, the buildings will go away and this will be basically a flat surface. My vision there is a golf park. And we live in the condo right above the garage door, home and the parking garage. And there's an incredible amount of people in here at this point. Bikes by here, you're worried to see biking, both every day.
Really? Stop me and say hello.
Okay. He goes by, there's a lot, a lot of folks who's just halfway. And this is really a great spot to be here.
Do you have, uh, numbers on the size of that lot right there?
I'm sorry, say anything?
The size of the lot that, that you're pointing at?
Yeah, it's fifty by one fifty.
The whole lot?
The whole.
The green space, the open space. That's a hundred feet. I'm sorry, I don't have that.
It's fifty by a hundred and fifty-four square feet.
So.
It'd be the equivalent of fifty by a hundred, possibly fifty.
Not counting the garage?
Not counting the garage, right. It's a lot of seventy-five hundred dollars.
Okay, that makes sense.
Uh, town lots are normally fifty by a hundred.
Um, or fifty by a hundred and fifty.
Right. Yeah. And so the, the north fifty feet basically will be taken off for the garages.
And what's compatible for parking?
Just for the record, when we open up the public hearing, we just want to make sure we have.
I apologize, Kate.
Um, and then a good question about those, uh, you've got four parking spaces on the south side. There's three of them, three, three. And kind of a tight corner over there with parking back after still, the Fisher Road right away and clear the cars, right?
Yeah, the building that sits, the existing building, if you want to get a full reference for that, is, is right about here.
Yes.
Where it sits about a, so there was a, a pole, a pylon that sat out there for about the last nine months until snow covered it up. And it had a light and it had a, a survey pin underneath of it. And that was there. And there's plenty of room to get around. It's a, it's a standard width street there to get around. Yeah.
Over, over discussing how really, uh, there are scenarios in which it's on the ground.
Right.
Just the garage. Well, if there's no other questions, we'll go ahead and, uh, open it up to the public for comments.
Do you guys need copies of this?
I'll have questions.
For the applicant or do you want to wait till after public? Yeah, um.
Yeah, a question with regards to Boardwalk Plaza. On the final plat, where were the dumps that were located on the final?
They were, um, do you know where the landscape areas were? They were in that area.
So what did you think, uh, the dumpster structure would have less light going through it and the landscaping?
Absolutely. It's just the, uh, the, after the fact, okay? Um, um, it would have had more thought process into it is if, if we would have realized at the time when we were doing that, five years ago, six years ago, that it was this big a deal as it's gotten to be in the last two years about dumpsters, um, in the town, because they really put the the hammer down on all of us property owners and business owners as far as the dumpster maintenance. Um, if there's something out of whack, we get a call by seven o'clock in the morning to get it fixed, literally. Um, we did this past year and the summer before. If the bears get into it, I'm out there, right at sunup, or one of my folks is, and we're picking all that stuff up there. If we had known it was as big as the deal is now, we'd have handled it differently at that time. But it wasn't that big a deal at the time. So it was kind of like, uh, hey, this is going to look a lot better if we do it this way. So we, I, uh, we spent the money and did the landscaping. If, if I'd have known now, would I know, if I'd have known then, would I know now about it? We'd have put the dumpsters there. You know, absolutely, hundred percent. And that's probably what will happen because we really know where else to put them. Um, we would have to tear that landscaping out and, um, and put them there. Because we have nowhere to put them. We can't put them anywhere in the right of way. And there's nowhere to, that's the only spot that we have for it.
A spot for a dumpster on that property on the street. So do you have to require any change in the final plat for the uh, Boardwalk Plaza staff against?
There we go. Making sure I'm on, um, nothing's required at this time for that one, based on what was done with the previous approvals and that class of section. So by doing this, it, and with the applicant, turn that over to the association that and addresses the, the location for dumpsters and the location and use of that space for this.
My question, Brad.
But this time we'll go ahead and open the meeting up for public comment. Uh, take them up and state your name and your address for the record and maybe three minutes.
John Worthen, fifteen Mountain Avenue. These parking spots stamped? These parking spots here? I guess there was five?
Oh, further down, yes.
Five of them? Are they on town land right of way?
So based on how those are shown, it looked like they were etched in on the right of way frontage? And within the right, within, correct, within the right of way itself. And so.
Okay, that's.
Yeah.
So the answer is yes.
Yes.
Uh, I understand that development where these cars are going to be in here, they bought some parking spaces a few years ago, I think in seventeen, is that correct? Twenty-five, okay. Are these, it was for two developments. So are these spaces here? Are they just for anybody? Does anybody have to pay for them? It's, they're, they're town, they're town spaces that anybody can park in and not have to pay the ten thousand dollars or whatever. Yes, no?
We'll take all your questions and then we'll have the applicant response. Everyone comments?
I'm looking for money. Okay. And the other thing was, how wide is this alley? John made a comment about turning a car in. I know you've got a project with some other garages and you really can't turn into it because there's not enough space unless it's a very small car. Uh, trying to get into here might be difficult. It'd be easy for a snowmobiling storage, but to call it a garage for a car might be stretching it just a little bit. Okay, I will ask you more.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so. Like I said, I'm writing down these questions. I'm sure staff is as well. We'll make sure we have anyone. Anyone else? I have a question. I don't know.
I'm Peter Randle. I live at four oh five, that's Fort Worth. Sometimes phone seven, it's too noisy, aggressively. So if that lot for the garage is subdivided and taken to the other property. But because it's standalone, aren't there setbacks from basically all sides? Maybe not the alley, does everything else, notes on the alley of all the houses. Um, and then isn't there a guideline for, if you have a certain size of property, a certain percentage is open space? Which would mean that shouldn't miss garage. Create some open space for the garage, not something to be given to another property or proposal or something like that. Curious about our idea, how it would be designated as a, um, so public know that it's theirs to use as opposed to not specifically for the people who own the garages or the condominiums or whatever the project on the other side. I just, there, it, there's, there's a bunch of proposals that just got thrown out here and I'm kind of late to the game, but um, those are the kind of questions I think need to be fine tuned. All right, ten minutes up?
No, that was the old, that was the old, I think he saw.
Yeah, you said, you said.
That's about it. I mean, there's, there's a number of questions I have. I might have more, but that's basically the things that popped into my mind when I listened to the proposal.
Thank you. Others?
Hello, Donald, excuse me, Port Call, Dan Avenue. Um, I know of, uh, town residents who have asked to build accessory buildings on vacant land and were denied because I guess there's a regulation that says the accessory building can't be built until that primary dwelling has been built. So, um, this seems, this hasn't even been mentioned in the staff comments, and I think it should be, and it would be a precedent set if it is allowed to be built. Secondly, um, if the garage is to accommodate parking spaces for residential units across the alley that weren't originally planted, then it's clear that the original plat did not provide for the amount of parking that is needed for what is now on the Boardwalk lots development. Um, and that is also a bad precedent. It, it seems like the, the developments that have been done by the applicant have a lot of moving targets. We're making up parking spaces for residential units that we made up that weren't originally planted and approved. And if the town keeps on allowing this, um, there will be no, you know, reliable precedent. Um, I think we've seen this in the other developments. We've seen it in Park Avenue lots where the original ground level space was supposed to be commercial. And it's not. And, uh, we're seeing it in the Boardwalk Plaza, that the ground level units that were supposed to be commercial are now going residential and requiring parking on other property. Um, so, uh, I think that is a serious consideration that should be factored into the board's decision on whether to approve the resolutions. I also think that approval of the resolution should be tabled until we hear about the master development. Um, because again, the the history seems to be that something is approved and then there are modifications made in subsequent years and it's not really what it was approved to be. So why approve this variance until we know what is going to happen with the project that the variance is supposed to be partially accounted for?
Thank you. Now, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion with this application. Uh, and invite the applicant back up to address the comment that we heard, um, examine if you're five or a few minutes, um, we'll also last after. Answer some of the questions that they heard.
Okay, so Jim Kreitzer, uh, eight twenty eight grand. Um, the parking is in the town right of way. They're, uh, they're not part of the parking town for the Spirit Lake or the Leatherwood project. It's additional parking that is is there. And so that is just for, we have all of the onsite parking that we need for the Leatherwood project. These are not part of that. So the parking that is outlined, the seven spaces is in.
These are not part of that, so the parking that is outlined, the seven spaces is in the R of the town right away. Uh, the turn radius is something that we will have plenty of room for, um. The architects and I both know about the turn radius and it will be, when we do the final C E S or the. Construction documents for the garages for all of the buildings, not only just this garage, but also buildings on the lake. Uh, they will all have the appropriate turning radius. Um, as far as setbacks though, all of the, that's what we're here for, we're asking for is variance on the setbacks for, for the garage building. If they don't approve the variance, then we'll scrap it around the building. I'm simply trying to clean it up, make it nice parking space, these are additional spaces, we don't need these, we already have the spaces we made for the condos that we built. Those were commercial condos, and when we originally did the project, we made all of the parking and we had ample parking plus extras. Four of those condos that we put in the bowling alley, we had those three in the front. These are additional spaces, and in the code, there's also a thing that says within, I believe it's three hundred feet. That as long as it's within three hundred feet, you can put parking spaces for any project as long as it's within one, so we can literally go walk away. And buy a piece of ground and, and, uh, and build something, and as far as your question about, you're absolutely right about the, uh. Uh, accessory building being built if the unit, or the dwelling units aren't built, well, in this case, the dwelling units are built. And these, and those accessory units are for those belongings. So, um, all of those questions have been answered, um.
Let's just let him address the one.
Yeah, so no, it's not on the plan, um, but, uh. If we need to add to the plan, we can, um, and as far as, uh, we can amend that plan, which we'll have to figure out how we will do that, but we'll. If we need to add and amend it and come back and do it, you know, it, it might be just easier just to scrap it, because. Everything gets so convoluted as you go through this code that we have in this, in Grand Lake. Everything leads to another problem, it's never an end, and so everything you touch brings something else up. And so if, if they don't approve it, then we'll just have stuff sitting there. Um, but it's, it's a good solution, it's a nice solution, the properties that we build are really, really nice and they're clean and they're well kept. And it's just, I'm just trying to make it nice for everyone, so. Anyway, um, as far as the public spaces that Peter brought up, Mr. Rempel. Um, signage can be done for that to make it, would be, uh, public, uh, designated for public use, and it will be. Um, and, um, as far as the open space for the garages, I haven't done the calcs to see, that's a good question. And if we don't have an open space for the garages, then I guess we'll have to come back in for a variance or. Scrap one of the garages and just then two and use that as open space for the garages. Um, that could be come out when, when we get to that point.
Then can I ask, what dimension of the garage, they're really big.
They're forty feet deep, they're ten of, they're, uh, two parking spaces each.
So it's parking six in there?
Well, yes, six spaces and that three.
Do you need six?
No, no, it was just, uh, uh, we had space for it, and so we just decided that would be. So people would have place to store stuff if they wanted to along with parking in there, whether it be a, a, you know, a snowmobile or a, a water machine or whatever.
Um, okay, but to your comment, if, if we were to say, we don't want to give you the variance on the lake. You could still build something, it just wouldn't be two, two condos in there?
It was basically designed because the dumpster didn't even go through anyway. But because we, we measured the dumpsters and we built the building around the dumpsters, it's basically where it came from. Does that make sense? Yeah, okay. We have excess parking, so we don't need any more spaces for the trees that we got, we're permitted in C O. There is ample parking, um, the code reads, as far as you brought up about. The units, the additional residential units, um, that we turned the commercial into three, as long as the front fifty feet of commercial. Or C T is used for commercial. The back fifty feet, or in this case, would be the back fifty feet of one hundred feet, can be used for, um. Residential, and so the reason we were permitted, allowed to build those three additional condos in those commercial condos, which are there. Was because they were behind the front fifty feet of commercial in front of the plaza. That makes sense?
Well, do you, does, I have some account, it's commercial?
Again, if we can try to, to address the commission.
Well, so anyway, when, when those were permitted, we couldn't, we, as long as we had the parking, which we had, we could. We can originally, uh, build in the front of the old bowling alley residential, okay? Because we're not in the front fifty feet of the lot, the front fifty feet has to be working, that's why we were allowed to do that. Yeah, so we need that, you know? Um, and as far as building things that aren't permitted properly and every project that we've done in this town. Has always been permitted, I've been in front of this planning commission a few dozen times, I would say. And in front of the board, everything's been permitted, the commercial space at Park. Which we were, uh, required to do, it was commercial and it sat there empty for two years. Which we paid property caps on, and we then came up with an idea to turn it into affordable housing. Well, we returned that one by this planning commission to do affordable housing in the same lot. And they wanted, I did the plan, I did the design, they had garages, they had fun site, and it would have been wonderful. And we returned that one to do that, and that was in what, two thousand and seventeen or maybe early eighteen? We did a formal plan, brought it in, we scrapped, so then I was directed, like, staff, that's something that. Uh, I, I, we came up with the idea to do the vet and refus, which is what we, because it's commercial and it's run like a vet and refus. It's nine day rentals, we have a, a business license and a sales tax license. And, um, which we file for every year, it's run just like that. And so it has been permitted, and it has been built for the code. And we did come before the board in the planning commission, it was permitted that way, it was built right, so there's nothing there. That anybody can say we ever did something we weren't supposed to do, I don't know where that crap comes from, and it's not what we do, I try to do everything. By the blood of every project, we tried really, really hard to do that. And as far as Grand Sunset project, Port-au-Prince, same goes for that, we've done nothing down there that wasn't permitted ahead of time. And went through the process and done it the proper way, and that's exactly what we're doing now, that's why I'm here in there. Um, so there's no history of anything that's been built in and used for something else, unlike many other properties in this town. Okay, you got any more questions? Thank you.
Thank you, um.
We turned your mic.
We may have more questions.
There you go, thank you, sorry.
Yeah, we may have more questions, so I want to let you back up, but I guess, um, maybe if staff wants to, to address a couple of the issues that. That we raised, or, I guess. Right now, the, the request is, uh, setback to the alley. Your setback, but if they were to subdivide this as an outlot. And open space, additional setback, plus all of that, things they do, right?
Yes, all that would have to come forward as part of that process, you know, as it stands today, there's a lot. And the request with the garage structure is a lot is, is designed, if it's dimensioned. Would be the specific requested day.
So would we be creating more of a. We also would be creating another variance by.
So right now, we have the rear setback, right now, it's from the alleyway, if that flips. And becomes where Lake Avenue to the east is, the frontage of the property would be to the west of the lot, and so. There would still be that setback, and so it could be a more general rear setback. Um, variance being granted, not being specific that it's the alleyway, or same with the side setback. Being the, the five, you know, five foot interruption, having that setback. Because then you run into that same issue on the alley, would then become the side, everyone kind of follows my logic as the property turns. When it's subdivided in the future, and so that would handle those various setback requirements within the property. And then it would just come down to the open space and, and part of it could be where the property line eventually goes in the future. And what that calculation is, I don't have that right now because it's not part of the consideration. And, and, um, did you want me to cover any of the other items, I know the applicant kind of.
Yeah, accessory use, that.
So the accessory use, yeah, so it, it depends on your zone district as a resident. On what uses are permitted by right versus those that require either additional review from the commission. And, and board of trustees or aren't permissible, and so given that this is within the commer, the commercial transitional district. It allows for accessory off-site parking. Or uses within the commercial transition or the commercial district. Within the, the, it's the distance that the applicant mentioned, and so. It, it's kind of, it depends on your zoning and location on the specific uses and the specific rules. Around that, just like downtown here, buildings are building the building because they don't have a setback. Um, but in some of the residential neighborhoods, there's more of a setback to create that space between homes. Uh, so it just comes down to your zone district for those specific questions with the accessory structure and for the parking, off-site parking. Thank you, you bet, and, and it was a great question, comment about not including all the analysis in the memo, as my second memo here, so. Um, make sure that we highlight some of those things moving forward, um, so that you have that insight, thank you.
You think it's maybe that's an address already? It, just for, uh, uh, commercial transitional, without commercial transitional. Uh, can, uh, structure be built without having a residence on it?
If, if it's part of an accessory structure tied to the off-site parking allowance. Uh, that's where the code gets, it starts to point to different sections, so under the commercial transitional district, it allows accessory structures. Or uses allowed within that district. Which are also those uses allowed in the commercial district, the commercial district allows off-site parking within the commercial transition district. Within a certain distance of the property, which would allow this structure as an accessory structure and parking. For that, it, I have it here, you have to really dig into code to find some of that. And, and then it references you back somewhere else, so it, it can be a little tricky, um, to kind of follow, I guess, the rabbit trail, if you will. Um, but it does allow for that accessory structures. Within relation to the uses that are allowed, and then with the off-site parking, that gives it that allowance to have that parking garage. Or parking spaces off-site.
So to continue that question, is this a use by right in the commercial transitional zone?
Is it permitted use, it's a permitted use based on that, those caveats, yes.
Including the use of the trash receptacles there as well, not just the, the parking itself.
Yeah, trash rese, trash recycling are specifically called out in the code in that nature, um, they're generally considered. Accessory type pieces to a, a project or development, especially if they're being constructed in enclosure.
In the case of the subdivision, would the frontage on this, uh, property be in the alleyway now, is that correct?
So if you create a line where those trees are hypothetically. The frontage would be where the trash receptacles are along Lake Avenue as it veers off to the east. And then the alleyway would be aside, the rear would be to the west where you have that grass strip of five feet. I think that's how you could potentially do it, you could also look at it as the alley, I'd have to look in the code a little bit more on. How it treats frontages, that's one thing I don't have as much insight in right now.
Maybe it makes sense, it would be on more major level rather than.
Typically, because that's how you address a property and add structures, and it's for fire and rescue safety purposes, that's typically how it's done.
So James, are you saying that when subdivided, going full circle to an hour of them? That creates new issues, or, yeah, I mean, because then we're, we're, we're back here asking for more variants.
Let's say the primary one that probably pops up is that front setback, because that's not included right now within the request. But we also don't know what open space would look like, and, and so that's why. I, as staff, made the decision to split it out from the rest of the, the, the other development pieces. Because it is kind of a standalone site, and it's not to say that if it's approved as is, you can't build that structure. Then to meet that requirement, I mean, who knows about the open space or where that property line, and there's a lot of other pieces that kind of come with that.
I guess that's my, my two concerns is that we're, i- if we're moving forward with this, we, we create it. We, we grant the variance knowing that there's probably future variances that then have to be granted for it. Um, I guess my second one would be just, what guarantee, this variance is granted, but other variances moving forward or not? What guarantee does the town have that this ends up becoming a public? So we want to condition the variance. What, what guarantee that eventually becomes a public park as he is alluded to? Well, I think that's part of the development plan we pretty would see at some point. So can I, is there a way to condition this variance on other variances?
Typically, you can't condition variances on other variances, so the, the way to probably approach that would be. If the variances are favorable by the commission for recommendation to the board trustees, a condition could be to clean up the rest of the site. More or less like improve the rest of the site or, um, you know, just clean up the landscaping. But in terms of requiring that it be come a part of your decade or anything like that, or construct in a certain way. You could use that as a condition of approval. Since it is separate, I mean, you could just ask for improvements on the lot, so it's cleaned up and it meets nuisance requirements within.
Okay, when the open space needed to the land. In, in that document. The ball for this garage structure. Do not have any setback. And that would be, you know. Incorporated into the view.
Um, it could be part of since, so I'll keep stitching it further and further, so. As the site stands today, I'll, I'll just keep reiterating, you know, the garage, the setbacks would allow a garage structure that's not tied to any other development. And potential just cleanup of the property, that could be your condition based on kind of what I heard, but I don't want to speak for the commission. Later on, if the next agenda item regarding development specific variances for the other property. Which includes the off-site allowances. What that does is it just creates the opportunity for the applicant to come forward with their preliminary and final development plans. Which within those preliminary and final development plans, there could be a variance. Once all the logistics are worked out regarding the open space at this property. With the development agreements on when it's dedicated, how, what kinds of improvements. And, uh, it, the code allows a development plan to include variances. So as part of the preliminary and final development plan process. If everything goes in that direction and there's agreement between the town and between the applicant regarding. Future off-site open space, whether that's approved again or not. That could be part of a development plan variance at that stage, building off of the variances before today. Since the variance today would allow the law as it is today to build the structure as presented today. Not considering subdividing because that's not a guarantee at this point, neither is the off-site open space. Since it's gotta go through a variance and it also has to go through the development process. But the applicant could, with this variance request, build the structure. As shown for the use of this as discussed.
And I guess that's my, my overall concern, that we get the variance now without the other variances and just, that's all we end up with is.
On, on this side, so, and, and, right, that's a condition with, that's a consideration with any variance of the. Commission would consider for recommendation.
Why don't you just shrink the garage and then you won't need all the variances? So.
Yeah, I'd say just a couple of persons, there is open space right here, we did meet the setback from the backside. And so I can look at this application that was in the open space for the garage, well, we can shrink the garages. This way, it's in the open space here and here. My opinion of that type of open space, regardless if it's usable or not. Is it just turns into trash area, it accumulates trash, it gets weeds, people don't take care of it, there's people smoking pot back there. Kids have them doing whatever they do, and it just, it's not good stuff, so anyway, this is what it is, the other thing is that we will not. If we don't get the variances we're looking for and use this, uh, the other part of the site as additional open space.
additional open space for the Leatherwood project, we're not going to do this garage structure. So if you want to make that a condition of approval, then if the Leatherwood project doesn't move forward, this garage structure will not be constructed as an accessory building for the Woodland Plaza. Because we have no desire to do this because we'll have to come back in. I have a development plan for this site, which includes a big building with garages on the ends. And and we were coming forward with that a year and a half ago when the Leatherwood thing started to happen. So if we don't get this as open space, then that development project is going to come into this office, or into this building. This will get built on. This is a much better solution for the whole thing. So anyway, you can put in there that if whatever doesn't get approved, we can't build the garage. That's fine.
It's too late for me.
Well, I'm not a public hearing.
It's only notice only very second. Shouldn't we do two and three and then go back to one?
What I was just gonna recommend the.
You're really smart.
I was gonna recommend, I think we've taken public comment, we've heard the applicant, unless the commission wants to discuss it further. We can table this, open up the next public hearings and just see if there are anyone to be able to on all. I know we're, I know this is separate from the Leatherwood project, but it's also tying with the request for the waiver of the open space.
That was my reflection, which is which we didn't see. Do you have some information?
I have one question that was brought up. If subdivided, is that lot too small to be considered? Uh, you don't build a full lot, what words to use to describe that?
It doesn't meet the minimum requirements. I I'd have to double check because we don't know. It's still subjective in that sense. So that would have to be considered and reviewed at that time. So yeah, unfortunately, I don't have that answer for you right at this moment.
Brought up, sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, it would it would be partly consideration. It would have to meet that minimum requirement.
Okay, so if everyone's comfortable, we're just on a what's the word, continue?
Yeah, so I just continue the action on the resolution to after the next public hearing.
So we'll go ahead and continue. And be until after we listen up and hear I don't see, then we will, we can kind of talk about them all together and we'll have to make separate motions. So I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing for I don't see. Resolution three hundred twenty-five, consideration of four zoning regulation variances to Leatherwood Development Site located on lots four through six, block five, permanent subdivision. In lots nine, two, fourteen, Leatherwood Inn by the Lake subdivision. More commonly referred to as ten sixteen Grand Avenue in thousand one, thousand five, and thousand seven again.
Okay, thank you, Chairman. Thank you, commissioners, and thanks for your patience as we work through the what should be split or shouldn't be split. So there's about three different ways to go about it. I guess I chose one, so.
Let me see real quick. Can you introduce yourself when you're talking every time and there's just people online that are confused as to who is speaking and that required.
Perfect. Thank you, sir. Yep, Josh Alhava, so planning consultant for the town. So before he was resolution oh three twenty-five for the Leatherwood development for four different variances that which will unpack here. So as the chairman said, this is at ten sixteen Grand Avenue, one thousand one, one thousand five, and one thousand seven Lake Avenue. The property is zone commercial within the core area of the community. Current uses is vacant on part of the parcel, especially the ten sixteen Grand Avenue portion. There's some lodging and residential that's occurring and a couple of the structures at at the present time. The planned use for the overall site is a mixed-use development. And within your packet, we have the variance request. And for supporting and for background is the Leatherwood project narrative to just provide a little bit more insights and extends a little bit beyond what the commission had reviewed at last month's sketch plan meeting. Similarly, the preliminary project drawings are incorporated for reference to for the specific variance asks. So you can see the modifications that were made to the architecture from the sketch plan discussion when this was first discussed. And then the alley grading exhibit, which is tied into one of the variance asks regarding how height is measured and where the height was measured from. So we're gonna have four different slides here. I know there's more text on a slide than I like, but wanted to make sure you had the code reference. And again, it's in the staff report, but want to make sure it was visible for the public. The first request is a variance to classify the Leatherwood project as group three under the mixed-use open space land area requirements, and that's for a thirty-five percent minimum open space requirement. The code reference there is section twelve two twenty-six A three. I didn't include the full table up on the slides, but it is in the packet. So I showed the two adjacent groups, group two, group three, group four, so you can see the ten percent change in the open space requirement for onsite open space. And so again, the applicant is looking to be classified within that group three thirty-five percent. The second variance request is to allow the off-site open space at eight twenty-five Lake Avenue, which we just discussed for and that's where, once we get into the preliminary development plans and we look at what that percentage what that space area is, we'll be able to get that fleshed up and fleshed out a little bit more. But to allow that to count towards the onsite total for the project. And the reference there is function twelve two twenty-six A four, which discusses the requirements for onsite open space land area requirements. And as you, as you see there, it also cross-references out to the definition second section for open space requirements. The third request is to allow a residential unit to remain within the front fifty feet on the main floor. And this is at the property, it's known as Lake House along Lake Avenue. I do have a picture of that one here in a little bit. It's one that currently acts as residential right there on Lake Avenue. The reference is section twelve to eighteen A ten, which discusses the requirement, which we heard about a little bit on the last public hearing, that the front fifty feet has to be for commercial uses. It can't be used for residential within your district. The final variance, this is the one that has the longest reference because of the definition, but this is to allow a maximum height of forty-five feet for building one. So this is just for building one. Measured from the alley low point located at the corner of Lake Avenue and Garfield Street. And so we'll get to a couple of those exhibits, but the reference here is the definition of building height, which talks about how a building height is measured and what additional allowances for building height are based on topography and and changes in topography of a site, which as we all know here in Green Lake, we have a lot of great topography variations. So it creates a lot of challenges on the development side. And so the code for the commercial district has a thirty-five foot maximum. As its base, and that's without the the topography additional five feet. So if you looked at this request, what that would change is an additional five feet on top of the forty foot that would be allowed with the topography changes on the site. Here are some current site photos. So the upper left-hand corner is taken at Garfield and Lake looking east and northeast. And the one on the top right corner is looking at the corner of one thousand one Lake Avenue with Garfield just off to the left side. Here we have the the Lake House property there on the left side, the one that with the residential in that front fifty feet. And then on the right is a view from Garfield looking where the lake is to the right and the alley is right there in the center. And so you can kind of start to see how that one, the property drops off from Garfield, but then also like the alley, there's going to be a lot of grading going in there to try and straighten it out and level that out. With the property. You've been on that late lately. Up and down, so it's probably a good sledding hill for kids if there's no traffic. The next image here shows a few of the enhanced renderings from the drawing packets. And so this was included again in your packets and you can see the modification, some of the adjustments that occurred from the sketch plan discussion where there were more flat roof lines because the applicant hadn't gone that far with all the architecture yet. So they wanted to show those different roof pitches and a little bit more of how those material treatments are being made to the building from a massing standpoint and for the discussion for these variances. So the top photo is off of Grand and of course, the bottom one is off the lake with Lake Avenue right in the front. Additionally, the applicant included a height comparison study within the drawing packet. This one shows that building one with its maximum height in relation to the Eagles Landing West and East properties, which are further to the east of the property. If you've seen those properties and if you look at from the lake and Lake Avenue, those properties are kind of built up on the top of the hill where because of the topography of this site, you tend to see that ground ground floor show up along Lake Avenue. So this comparison shows really that height comparison between the east and west Eagles Landing buildings and this proposed building one, which the height variance is specific to.
What's the height of the whole thing from Lake Avenue to the top?
Yes. I'll probably defer that to the applicant and their team to talk through the the specific dimension. I can't zoom in enough right now.
You can't really see.
Yeah, yep. So I know the applicant has those numbers and so I'll let them speak to that.
So the question. Would you like to finish your presentation?
Okay, if you have a specific clarification.
The other clarification was why on the variance are we taking the measurement from the alley at forty-five feet versus Lake Avenue of forty-five? Building one is all connected. Why are we taking? We're not taking it from a low point, we're taking it from almost the highest.
Was it considered the highest first? And that's why the full description for the height variance was included from the code section because the code is specific on how you measure height. The applicant's request is based on the alley using the alley as kind of the base point because Lake Avenue is so far down the hill from there. And and so it's it's kind of showing then how this property then will tie into those on Grand Avenue with the step down in stories. So it's specific to that applicant's request.
Okay, is that considering the regrade of the alley?
Yes, that is based on the regrading of the alley. And that's why the alley regrading exhibit wasn't.
And the asset cable, uh, actually tight distance from the Lake Avenue.
Yes, the applicant can speak to that as they've done some additional modeling and that came out. Correct, along Lake Avenue would be based on measuring from Lake Avenue.
And typically, what is that?
Have to remember how the code reads. Yeah, I think that's how the code reads. Measure distance measured from the original grade or finish grade, whichever is more restrictive to the highest point of the rough surface. And then the elevation difference with the five foot allows an additional five foot. Yeah, so it's based on the original grade or the finish grade, whichever is the more restrictive of the the two. Yep. And so, so again, that's specific to the the variance request by the applicant is to have the measurement based on the alley point, just probably because of the grading and the unique drop-off on the site, but I'll let the applicant speak to that. See. I've jumped through the staff analysis really quick and then and then turn back over to the commission, but again, notices were completed. We did receive some comments from property owners and those that received notices. And a handful of them were really particular to the height and the massing discussion was probably the the biggest comments we received feedback from. Based on the mass of Lake Avenue from the lake's perspective and just that overall height along that perspective.
And George, you as staff in your write-up said, I think you think it's reasonable to measure from the alley.
I I think if we're wanting to establish.
I think you think that's reasonable?
I think based on the staff analysis, given the topography in the area and how the site is laid out in relation to adjacent properties and sites, that the alleyway creates kind of that level playing field throughout properties as you move west, those to the north, and then further northeast, those that are along Grand Avenue, those that as you go west across Garfield, a lot of those properties are at almost where that alley grade is, and that's where they're measuring all their heights from. And that's where even the Eagles mass property, you know, it was from that fish grade. And so based on that, it seems like creating kind of that that central foundation to the overall development site, that's kind of the more central location to measure that. So that was the logic behind looking at the variance and kind of that base point with the alley. For the SaaS analysis, some additional details. So the property is located within the core of the downtown. It does seem reasonable to allow that classification, that there's classification for the onsite open space to try and maximize the the opportunity for the site. As it is with all the other properties along Grand Avenue where you have really just the building covering most of the lot to try and keep that the the more intensive uses, the more busy uses right there and then the location of the boardwalk and the beach and the other trail elements. And the onsite open space is being provided now, having the other pocket park seems like kind of a good extension of trail and tie to some other neighborhoods. And so from a staff standpoint, looking at that offsite credit seems like a reasonable option with the onsite adjustment and the offsite credit. Looking at the use of the residential property and what exists today, that seems like a kind of a continuation of just what's occurred over time and nothing is really changing with that overall structure outside, just cleaning it up and refreshing it. And then for the height, things to consider are how the property is set up, the step backs that the applicant is providing with the additional levels going in and then its context with other properties. So if you're out at the lake and looking at the perspective of this property, you would see the other buildings height in kind of that same plane. And so just like we discussed with the the last public hearing, these are the considerations when making a recommendation and of course, when the board trustees make an action on a variance. I won't read back through those and then within your packets are resolutions that have either a recommendation approval, recommendation approval conditions, or a recommendation with what means of facts.
We we're going to separate them there. I think we do have notion of one variance. No, it's one resolution for three variances, but we can talk about.
George, in regards to your comments, you mentioned staff recommendation. Who are you considering staff being yours?
So based, I I didn't make a staff recommendation. It's just a staff analysis. So based on our analysis, some of the various requests based on the condition and the proximity in the site and the comparison with other properties in the area, certain requests of the variance, that's where we highlight seem reasonable based on other conditions and factors. And that's through review of the plans from a planning engineering standpoint, that's through discussions with management and understanding kind of what the the overall context and then also building off of some of the feedback that came out of the sketch plan review and the previous discussions that the applicant has received feedback from either the commission or the board trustees. And which areas came out as either we want to see a little bit more or this is a big red flag to us. And so we took all of those different considerations into our staff analysis based on that. But it did not provide a specific staff recommendation. And that's based on what I've seen done in the past. Happy to make those adjustments in the future. That is the the direction and request of the commission, board trustees for staff to make more specific recommendations.
Other questions for staff at this point? If not, I'm like, yeah, I'm not to give a presentation. Open it up for public comment. Again, thanks for the patience of course, to all of us.
All right. Scott Munn, M A Studios, forty-three Grand St. Rose, uh, four seven two one. Happy to be back in in front of you or at least, you know, we are with Jim. For those of you who don't know me, I've been up here for fifty-three plus years, seeing a lot of things change and seeing a lot of things that are not changing, getting to see a lot of things that will change. And you know, we're we're hoping that you know, that going through the right processes and and doing a thoughtful and hopefully a a well-accepted development is is the goal that we're all trying to go for. So this was, you know, that being said, you know, we've we've been in front of the planning commission and So this was, you know, that being said, um, you know, we've we've been in front of the planning commission and the board. A few times now and have, you know, taken some of their suggestions and recommendations in order to. Try to move this um development forward. You know, this property is now, you know, controlled under one person and you know, something's going to happen to it. So. We're hoping that, you know, with some advice and some guidance that we can continue forward with um, you know, with this development in order to. Um, be respectful both to town and uh you know, to the to the lake that we all love. You know, the architecture itself is is you probably won't know with respect to the town is is um, you know, there's really not one style in the kind of grand lake. There's many styles. Um, there's old, there's new, there's really old and there's not a really lot of new. Um, but there's a combination thereof. So, you know, we've tried to capture a little bit of the fabric of every little. Bit of Grand Lake and try to, you know, weave it together at least in something that's respectful that has, you know, human scale to it. And um, you know, hopefully will be uh a great asset of the town. We're, you know, we're here to request, you know, a few slight variances, um. One of which is, you know, reducing the amount of required mixed-use commercial, um, which. I think as we all know, um, that makes these commercial regulations releasing the town. Um, at least in our opinion, um, we have a lot of commercial open non-use buildings that. Have so on the windows or paper bags on the windows and. Um, you know, hopefully, you know, with the slight reduction in that, we can, you know, produce some really highly quality. Residential units that could bring a lot of um people to the town to be able to utilize hopefully. Some more of those commercial spaces with more restaurants or more, you know, whatever happened. So with that being said, you know, I know this is a big scary thing for a lot of people. It's big and scary for me, um. But, you know, hopefully we can, you know, find a solution to to make something that's appropriate. So. All I have to say and happy to answer some questions.
Kim Kreiser, project manager for Spirit Lake County LLC and uh. I want to talk more about the variances themselves and the uh the architecture at this point. A couple of things, you asked a question about. The height of the building from here to here, um, it's. The peak of the roof not be not the bulkhead for the elevator, but the peak of the roof is fifty one feet, six inches.
How much, right?
Fifty one feet, six inches. Um, so from here to here, that all that one growing that you know of the uh.
There you go.
Yeah, this is the bulkhead, which this growing is basically level with the Eagles nest property. This is the height of the building itself down here. We are two feet below lower building. And you will understand five feet below the upper building of Eagles nest. Eagles nest also is fifty feet closer to the lake and it's straight up and down. Our building terraces back. It's fifty feet farther away from the lake and it terraces back. Planning Commission over the last couple of years has initiated some step back regulation. As far as on the sides in the front so that it doesn't have this big mass that goes straight up and down. And so as you go up, you could go back, you come up, you go back, you come up, you go back. So it has less impact. On the visual and you're standing there and you're dealing with what it actually looks like. So it's terrace back. We're asking for a variance for the heights for five feet, five to six feet, which is about this tall of this entire site. The the code is basically from the lowest point, if you have a thing that's from the lowest point. To the highest point, around any two quarters, you're allowed, that is more than thirty five feet, you're allowed to add five feet. To the elevation, which goes from thirty five to forty eight. We're asking you to go to forty five, give you an additional five feet. And again, that does not include the bulkhead for the elevator. That doesn't mean that this bulkhead will be that high. The goal says if you can go up to sixty feet, we have to put a minimum cross here above the elevator when it's constructed. And we'll try to keep that down as low as possible. There's one of these on the hub project, you know, you can see it because I kept it down, but it's only six up. About that far over top of the roof. We doesn't have to be way up in the sky, but we can help that. So we will register this is just a community that. It could go higher, um, but this can be up to sixty. So we're asking for five feet, which is about here on the knee down. The reason we asked for that, we were original plans. We had, if you go back to the other drawing, it shows the elevations. We had designed on the buildings on Grand Avenue, which is here. The T-shirt shop, I mean, folks who know the T-shirt shop next to us here today, that are part of the open area of the building. But um, I'm not for some time this morning. This was designed to have two stories of condos of the merchant, not unlike Warlock Plaza. And coming to planning meetings and hearing the planning commission is saying about, they want to try to keep Grand Avenue clear. And not have such a mass that will break down, but granted across the street, there's a park on this project. But still, we tried, I came up with this idea that why don't we add a little more height to this building? Which will allow us to put the additional units that were going to appear to get our density need to make it a viable project. But have them here and reduce this thing with two-story structure. And so that's what we came up with. Asking for this variance to give the sector five feet for the one. Now, also, we could, we could meet the the height requirement, but during our planning commission meeting uh that we had. I don't know, three, four weeks ago, which wasn't a hearing that was supposed to. And and the meeting that we had, um, I think it was either in May or June with the town board and the planning commission. Um, everybody talked about they don't like the flat roof of the of the Warlock Plaza. Some people say it's okay. Most people don't like it. So we originally designed this building to have some uh facade around the front. They hated more of a mountain look and in the back of the building, they had a flat roof. So we have a pair of walls in this building that we had built. So. We backed off of that and we're asking for this variance so that we can add this gable roof on top here, which we need that extra space to make the floors. Get so that they're not so cramped. You could do eight foot ceilings, but eight foot ceilings and seven and a half foot ceilings and beams are not. It doesn't work anymore. I'm looking down and I can't even do it more away from it. And so that's why we're asking for this variance. It's not because we need to go through the thought process of understanding that the requirements are there. Because we wanted to make the corridor on Grand Avenue less of an impact. And we wanted to try to make, get the gable roof, better look more, looking at it from the lake here. Now, this is not the final design of the building. This is, that will come out in the next several weeks and it's. It's a new course for a rendering, but it's not fine. There's going to be a lot more eyebrows on windows and a lot. It'll look a lot better than it is right now. So that's one of the variances that we have. Um, I talked about the fifty one foot six from the southwest corner to the top of the building and forty five feet from the alley. Commissioner uh Sabonis asked about, is that the the grade of the alley existing? So if you go to the, you know that picture you showed the snow today?
Yes.
The existing grade, it's about right in here is where that starts. And so when we chop this off, it's going to be about forty five feet or about right in here. And so this whole area is going to be taken down about seven feet. So this home, which is not to to the code right now, it's over a ten percent grade. We're bringing this down to an eight percent grade and it's going to take all this soil down in here about seven feet that are taken down to the lake. So about as tall as I am to the bottom of my feet, the sound of the soil will be taken out of that entire site and then it will be graded down.
Your measurement will take off from there.
I'm sorry.
Your measurements on the tape.
The forty five feet is from there, yes.
So about five to six feet lower than what that would be.
That's correct.
So again, when that is done, what would the elevation gain or loss be from the alley when you worked it to leak? So in other words, you're going, you're talking, we're still kind of thinking about that fifty one.
That's what it will be, fifty one six, from the southwest corner down below to the top of the building.
No, but you're measuring the height, you're forty and forty five from the alley.
Right.
So what's the grade difference between the alley and Lake Avenue?
Right now?
When you're done with, done with moving it.
After you.
I don't have the answer to that.
It's six foot six.
Yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to say anything that's incorrect. We have that 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 site section of the.
Well, you guess, you can guess what, what I'm driving at is, is the fifty one the measurement we should think about or is the failure the measurement?
Fifty one.
Yeah.
Fifty one six from Lake Avenue. Yeah, that's the number you need to look at. So if you were standing at fifty one, down at the corner or the southwest corner of the building, looking at the building, it will go up and to step back like this. And it's fifty one six. At this way, no, it's not up here now, but um, again, it's at the top of building one, not the lake house or the tree house. Those are going to stay basically around that. It's just this building, these uh eleven or twelve condos during this building. It's so from here to here. It's hitting one six. I'm sorry.
I just want to ask you, what portion of the building? So how far back before you even made the variance? They did a very specific.
Yeah, it's probably about fifty feet. I would say the front fifty feet doesn't, it's not really affected by that.
So you have your. Patio square blocks that come out. It's everything above that, basically. If you go to one of the other ones, you didn't.
You're a little west, um.
So you kind of have those square blocks that, the brown square blocks that are there. I'm assuming it's kind of everything above that.
I would, we said about two feet. These dimensions are a work in progress, so these dimensions that I'm popping up to you. I can't be held to it until I I know exactly where we're at.
Yeah, I just want to understand where that variance starts to exceed that.
It's probably going to be about in this area right here, the back of this patio or the second level. So you'll have the front patio, so it's probably going to be about twenty five to thirty feet.
Okay.
Cause these lots are a hundred feet deep, you're on a hundred and fifty. Yep. So what we have of these lots is forty feet of parking in the back in garages in the, it's commercial. There's a corridor for storage and access between the garages. Everybody's going to have a little storage unit inside and there'll be some like kayak storage and things like that in the hallway. And then it goes under the staircase hallway in the elevator areas. And then into the front fifty feet, which is commercial. So that's that variance.
Jim, um, with your permission, Karen, Scotty. Um, so looking at the grading and that difference, it it correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, the alleyway, you come in almost at the second level. From Lake Avenue, the first level is down. And that's about a twelve to fifteen foot difference. So between where the alley is, where you're coming in at that second level and the front at Lake Avenue. You have about twelve or fifteen foot fall between there across this property. I think that speaks to your question.
Okay.
So that's creating, you know, where the code allows five foot, five foot grade change, you're almost twelve to fifteen.
Clarifying, talking from possible village alley grid to Lake Avenue.
To Lake Avenue, about twelve to fifty, and that's based on current schematics, right?
Well, I can address that if if you guys are open to it.
Where does this building sit? Where is this building height going to sit in relation to the height of Rockies?
Can you call me? Have you seen that? Do you have your phone?
Yeah, I'm just curious, all the renderings. Which I understand it's. Projects, but that would be helpful.
I would, as a guess, my my thought process would be Rockies is probably close to thirty five feet.
Rockies is thirty six.
Thirty, they're over there.
So it's, it's going to be eleven. Thanks, buddy. Uh, it's about eleven feet more. There's about nine feet more, excuse me. So it'd be about the height of the ceiling.
Right, because you don't have the Lake Avenue drop off for that property.
Yes, about nine.
And and just based on the reference to like Eagles landing and spirit and those buildings, what's the height from there out? Kind of looking at the alley grade there and the top of the closest building to you next year, that's the left of the, you know, that number?
Same as much.
Uh, so the building just west of the current western motel, you know, that height and alleyway grade to top of that.
I don't have that. I can get that, but I kind of shot it today with my laser and.
To the point where I can get to roughly thirty eight.
So what would be asking for is about seven feet more than that, if that's fairly accurate. Um, so I just want to go through the variances and give you guys the reason why I got there. You've had heard this with the two past meetings or the first meeting we had many, many months ago. But the public hasn't heard most of this stuff. Um, one of the variances we asked for is on this building here. Okay, originally, right now, this site right here is being used as, it's a one bedroom condo apartment. It's being used as residential and hasn't been for a long time. And it's, the stairs will go up to the event center, which is right here. This would be the bar area and inside dining area, etc. And this, and the deck would be about right across here. You come up the staircase and there's a door that goes into this space right here. And so if this is residential, then this is real residential. We originally asked for. We wanted not to ask for, but brought up their plans if we had site for any elevations that we would. Want to keep this as residential and make this another small residential, but it costs a little bit. And it still had these two in this room. Um, there was some kickback about. Trying to keep this restaurant space open because it's such a critical amount of income, sales tax, revenue for the tenant. And so we redid the plans. I didn't want to do that. I wanted to keep this residential, so we changed our capital. And you know, I have all of these in the, they can go into here in a couple of minutes and they won't be much dragging any of the problems as quick as I can. Um, so we are going to go ahead and try to have this open for the the season of two thousand twenty six, not this coming year, the twenty six. The existing apartment here, we're going to turn it, we'll be revamped into a bar area. And when we start to talk about the design a little bit, just sitting here standing up again, I mean, there's a covered area here, there's a handicap. High shape because I'm just new to it. There's a handicap ramp right here that comes in because now, if you go there, you notice there's like a. About a two foot, three foot rise to get into that building, but you walk upstairs and the first step is out of code, it's pretty high. And so we'll fix that, but it would be against their face here, that where you'll go up. Into that area, and this patio will be redesigned to give that elevation. So that elevation of this area here is the existing elevation of the smaller of this apartment, which is going to be a park. Which we're going to make as a bar. The restaurant will stay in the same place. The event center itself is a condo and then there's two new condos that will be on top of that. Okay, and then this is the lake house, which will be the three floors of the lake house will be three condos. Then the tree house, which is one of the houses that you drive out, where we have five of these three condos in the lake. So these are basically the new one. We call page one, but page two, page one is the plaza. And then this is building one, if they suit. So one of the variances we asked for is to allow to keep that residential unit. Right here. Instead of having two rooms, we're just going to have one hundred and four variances. So we have the height variance. We have this variance, we have the variance for the open space, which I'll go into next. So early on, when I met with, one of the reasons we wanted to do the offsite open space. Was some of the reasons I brought up earlier, which were, it's a great place for a park. It's a great place for a dog park. Everybody. Their dogs crap all over the place now. A lot of people have cleaned it up. It's a really great spot to have a little park for the community. So we add that as open space. The open space we have now, I I got some dimensions on that. The plaza that goes through it. It's about, you guys asked me this question today. When I met with you about the width of the. On Grand Avenue, the width is about forty to forty five feet for the plaza, the door and door. And down here, it's about fifty feet. And as a reference for that, I take that team out there a couple of times. And I, I think, what is the road now that goes down and down and I apologize for forgetting it, we're next to the historical. Picken. It it's almost exactly like the width of Picken is what this will look like, this plaza. So you'll have access, which is over here on the other side of the lot piece, where people coming down, we'll have access from bringing out. And that's where this whole idea started, was to do this was by buying the extra parcels. On the brand, which is the old golf course, meaning though, was to create a plaza, bring the alley grid down, which is out of code. On the brand, which is the old dog, which means, was to create a plaza, bring the alley grid down, which is out of code. Uh, because of the. And break it down so that when you're walking across, so you can see out to the lake, and break another way for people that can get down to. And and so by doing that. We create a whole other pathway for traffic to get in the whole way for the public. Now. We asked to diminish or reduce the size of this for a couple of things, so we can add a park for Lake Avenue. We can not develop that site. It'd be a whole other building, a whole other process for the building. And and put the building where they need to be in the town core, where everybody's at. Where we can add commercial, where we can add more residential. And so that's why we're asking for the offsite. Um, we have a park, which is the lake. We have a park, which is National Forest. We have a park on the north side, which is the town park. There's a lot of open space around these buildings, and that's why we just assumed, hey, and put it where we're somewhere that could really be used as a, as a base, whether it's a park or a public park. What would be even more like this? That's the reason we got this idea of re-earbours, instead of building a separate building over there.
It was the thirteen thousand four hundred and five square feet, is that the alley? The the or the plaza, sorry? Is that all of that? It comes, is that thirteen thousand feet?
I have to look at the reference.
Uh, page fifty nine, what I'm looking at. There's a breakout of the open space chunks. And Cheryl was. Thirteen thousand on the side, I think you buy hundred outside totaling nineteen. So I'm just curious, is that thirteen four oh five plaza must be?
It is. Yeah, because it then it refers to the um the park, it's additional fifty five hundred feet.
Right.
Yeah. I have several things to talk about with the variances yet. Basically, I don't have a light that I gotta look at. I think that the height thing is just a big deal. I understand that, but in reality, what we're asking for again is a spot on me about here now is what we're really looking for. That's the variance we're requesting, is that much square footage height wise. We're getting rid of the maps on Grand Avenue and putting it on the other side.
Ask why you asked for variance there, the alley, because it's on the lake, but the typically measured, or on Lake Avenue, like typically measured, it's probably height.
Well, w- we are asking for both because the code states that if for two quarters of the property, you can add five feet, and so it's really five feet, it's not thirty five. Oh, you mean the fifty one?
Yeah, I'm just wondering why you didn't ask for fifty one feet versus.
Well, because right now it's like there's two separate buildings there, and so. Um, I don't have a a direct answer to that, other than a BS answer, and I don't want to give you that.
No, I just wondered why why you chose that location measure.
I think it it just has to do with where the elevation of the alley is gonna end up, and that's gonna be the actual height of the building. Gabe would have a really good answer for that. But he's not available, but that I talked to him in great length over the last day or so after I found out he wouldn't come. Uh, to get some of these uh answers for you, uh, because he was gonna be presenting that, but. I asked him that directly today, and he said that's because that's the height of the building up above, and that's what we need to concentrate on is that final height up there.
But I think, Jim, what what I'm struggling with is exactly kind of what Jay was asking is you're starting from twelve feet up. The count. And looking at it from the lake, but thinking, well, shouldn't you count it from the bottom that we can see? That's what we're wrestling with here.
I see. Okay, so I think that the answer to that would be if the if the lake house and the tree house and like the tree house, we're allowed to go thirty five feet or the tree house, actually forty feet because of dimension. Um, we asked these questions early on, actually, it's coming back to me now, um, like a year ago. Um, and and so if we were just gonna add up on the top, we would be able to go thirty five feet from. Another perfect example of this would be the townhomes that we just finished the exterior on at Portercrossing. Because the alley is lower than the main level, and so she, we were using the the forty feet of the total height. From the going up from the existing level is what we were about to do, and that's where how we got to that elevation. So it will be something looking at kind of like looking at that.
Where did, where does this building sit in relation to the tree house? Height wise? What do we don't see?
Yeah.
Yeah, the existing, yeah, your distant tree house of your. Because it's two stories on the backside of the alley.
Mm hmm.
Right now, so.
About seven.
It's like five, seven, yeah.
Okay.
Seven.
So seven feet higher than what we're seeing right now with the existing.
Yes, but I don't believe that's at the forty feet that is allowed either. Does that make sense? So it could be just a couple of feet. There is an illustration in the plans that you have that shows that. It's in one of them.
Yeah, I just couldn't tell.
But no plans of raising the current elevation of the treehouse. It would just jut out sound regardless of.
That's right. If there was, uh, Michael, it would be less than the required or the allow of forty feet. If they'll get, if the roof line changed and put a, an additional architectural gable center or something like that. The right now, the plan is just a regular real play down.
I haven't seen it followed in the, the color there, just looking at the minutes.
Okay.
Okay.
So I think the last variance that I need to talk about is, which came up after our last meeting with you guys about a month ago. Which was, um. Heather had brought up the excess commercial around town, which is always a thought about all of us, and. Um, I go to great lengths to try to fill the commercial. We did a really good job at the project. I brought people in from out of state. Built their sites out for him, and and we got them in there and we're running really great businesses. Um, we just got the electricity hooked up at Portercrossing. It took almost two years. Uh, but we just got it hooked up in late May to where we were able to even get, try to get COs on that building, the first building, and then the second building. And so by the time we got in the midsummer, there was really no time to try to build that space out and get anything going. I am currently working with some people. To try to get some tenants in there and get that space finished for this coming season. I don't have anything yet put together formally, but I do have a couple of things that are happening. We did have a buyer for one of the spaces. But that did, that fell through. They bought a different building in town, and so, um, we will get some stuff done with that. But as Tiny knows, so everybody knows, it's just not as time to drive as the day you start, and a year and a half later. You should be putting tenants in. There's so many things that are out there that we have to deal with. Not only this process, but with the gas company and the electric company and the suit sanitation district, and and all of the things that we have to deal with to get. These sites ready, and we have to wait on their timing, and I literally, last winter, we had electric boxes all over because we, the the building was down. I'm going into another, and just to let you understand my math of this. We had little electric heaters all over that project and cords turned all over, and they had to pay people every day to run out there. And moved the snow away, redid the cords, replug them in, because breaker would be blowing on the limited amount of power we had, because we didn't have power in those zones. And so we literally couldn't build anything or put tenants or occupants in those buildings until the summer. And so that's what we did. And now we're there, we've got COs, everything's checked out, and hopefully this year we'll get those buildings sold. But anyway, back to where I was at, um, the last request is we have met, we have met the open space required as long as the variance is granted for the parks. With the commercial and residential percentages. But after the last meeting, it was brought up that, hey, you're putting another eighteen thousand approximately here, a commercial space in the town, which we don't need, which is, we really don't. But this is gonna be a little more, um, one, I ain't working with some tenants on these for these spaces already. Um, we reduced the amount of space by about thirty five hundred feet, and that reduction, can you, we chopped some off the back of this building on this side. From the back half, back portion, we have the back half. And then right here. We brought these buildings and we did covered patio area on each side. I came up with the idea to add some open area here. For ceiling and people to get under the weather shed and things like that, and we reduced the commercial by, you know, we reduced the commercial by about thirty five hundred feet. Now we're at about fourteen thousand plus total square feet instead of eighteen thousand square feet. And and by doing that, it screwed our, our ratios up about two and three quarter percent. It needed to be at twenty five percent, and now we're at like twenty two and. Three quarters or something like that. I think it's on one of the sheets. So we're asking a variance. Because we restructured the other commercial space to bring us back into compliance for that couple of percentage of open space, and that's why that last variance was added to this list. And that's what we're asking for, so that is the last.
So Jim, explain why that's important. That that determines the amount of open space you have to clear.
Right.
Like, that's why you're asking for a variance, because you've moved. The ratios moved so that we change our open space requirement.
Right, so we went and then built the space up as commercial space right here on each end of this. And went back to the plan that we brought in, the planning commission four weeks ago. Um, we could meet, that ratio would be there, but but after that meeting, it was suggested that we try to figure that out, which we do. It wasn't a, it wasn't a mandate, it was a suggestion.
Okay, no, that's good. I just wasn't clear. I don't think to most of us why you were even, why that was important.
It's because it was brought into us, and we're, we're, we always try to follow the lead if we can, if that makes sense, and that's why we diner. It seemed like such a small amount that, but we should try to get that accomplished.
And and it changes the ratio of what's required on site from thirty five up to forty five percent, so it makes a ten percent.
Which makes it impractical, impossible to do.
Right.
Yeah, to me, that, we don't have that extra ten percent. So we're asking for that two and a half or two and three quarter percent variance.
Okay. Within these requests. Right, sir? I'm sorry, is that in one of the four requests for tonight?
Yeah, that's variance, um. Number five.
Yeah, that's the open space type one.
Okay.
Go use that type three open space, yeah.
Yeah, that's all I got, you guys.
Other questions at this point, or? Again, thank you for your patience, um. Come on, give your name, your address, your record, you'll put us again.
Thank you, work take fifteen, Mountain Avenue. Matt? Will you please put up that picture that you said, if you're on the lake, this is what you'll see.
Yes, let me get there. Uh, well, I mean, you want the colored rendering?
Well, you had all the, the heights going across.
That, that's.
Buildings.
Oh, we're over here. The other reference, let me see here.
You, that was your reference.
That's, yeah, what the applicant had in for their comparison analysis. I'm trying to think, oh, right there.
Ah, there it is.
Okay.
This is very nice. If you're out in the lake. And for three months out of the year, when you can be on the lake, this is what you'll see. And the people across the lake, that's what they get to see. But us people who live in Grand Lake, see the back of this, we don't see the link anymore. Because if you're gonna go at this height, all the way across, you go up Garfield Street, and the only way you're gonna see the lake is if you get all the way up to the top. And then you'll be able to see it. So everybody, everybody below me, because I can see over here. Because I live on Mountain Avenue. And if I go to the top of my property where I've been thinking about building a small house, I can see the lake. But I can't see over these buildings unless I can get a, a variance to go higher. But I can't get over all of this to see the lake. I can see the houses across, but it cuts out my view. I know there's nothing I can do about that, especially if he does it legally, and he's all within legal, but everybody from. The lake, all the way in, all the houses, they're not gonna be able to see the lake. You understand what I'm saying?
Is it okay for me?
Oh, I'm not supposed to do that.
Well, I I've just.
Yes, we understand what you're.
Okay, that's all you gotta do is not.
Yes.
No, I'm gonna do not. The other question is, how far away do I have my accessory? In other words, you had. Uh, accessory parking for the first variance. And Jim used so many feet, it has to be within so many feet of the building? You're nodding yes, okay. So how far away does the open space have to be? To qualify for his space here? Can he have, can he buy a lot, um, I don't know, somewhere on Park Avenue? That's fifty by a hundred and call it open space and use it on his property down by the lake? Um, I think what he wants is very nice. I'm not against it, but the question is, how far, how far do we go? If that's okay, you know, what's, what's the footage? Everybody knows the footage for the dumpsters away from a project. You gotta be three hundred feet. That's, and you can put this in as a accessory. So in other words, if he wanted to, he could buy a lot on Park Avenue, which is commercial, residential. And put all of his dumpsters and his garages over there, and people can park over there and walk to their condo. If that's what he wanted to do, if that's the legal part. What it comes down to is open space. The trustees who passed these coordinate uh numbers in the sixties. Did not want everything jammed up in town. They gave us the greenway, which is now the roadway, now, uh, any owner. On Main Street can come into town and plot down twenty dollars, get a permit, and put, put four picnic tables in. Open space. Open space, you're talking. Open space. And that's not open space, that's the taxpayers' space to live in town.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
You do, yeah.
Jim Shereka, two thirty six Lakeview Drive, Grand Lake. Well, this evening, I'm speaking to you as the president of the Grammeri Area Historical Society. And in our meeting, uh. Three hours ago, we authorized me to, and that is hoped for ease to make some comments on behalf of the map, Historical Society. We like the idea that we're gonna be developing some lots, presently vacant, um, the Lily Putt property on Grand Avenue. We like that, like the fact that there are two stories. We like the regrade of the alley between Grand and Lake Avenue as long as it does not impact. Grammeri Area Historical Society. We have a concern as to where that tie-in point is relative to the gallery. Portion of the Cawthorne House Museum. And even as long as we're not impacting that, we still have the parking, uh, that we presently have for museum visitors off the alley there. Yeah, that's a steep alley. Uh, we like the attempt to utilize uh step backs to reduce the impact of a four-story vertical structure along Lake Avenue. We like, uh, with the projects that have been done, we are anticipating, hoping, and I think seeing the use of more wood and stone or rock. In the appearance of the buildings. We don't care what you do with your buildings. We are concerned with the appearance of the buildings. We don't care what you do with your buildings. We are concerned with the appearance of the buildings. So, uh, that's these buildings, at least at the conceptual stage, are looking better than, uh, the hub building, which, uh, I will comment on. Uh, regarding variance two, uh, you know, putting an open space there, just be aware that we have and are continuing to develop the College Board History Park, one block further west. From the proposed eight twenty-five open space. So there will be an arc there along the Continental Divide National Cemetery Trail. Again, regarding number three, continued residential use. We don't care what you do inside the buildings. Uh, regarding the stamp analysis, regarding, uh, variance four, age four, you're five. Using the alley ways of height measurement is not in compliance with the time period. So look at town code and the little picture and it's different than what you're posing. And also references, it's gotta be the undisturbed ground around the property. So, the alley is going to be disturbed. Measurements have to take place before that ground disturbance. That's the town code. Um, regarding the comments, uh, from MM Studios. Uh, item E regarding building number one. The statement says you're seeking a minor height variance. It sounds now like we're asking for six and a half foot variance as opposed to a five. I'm not sure I figured out that I know the measurement has to go to the highest point of the building and if that's the elevator structure. Look at what happened with Rocky Mountain when they wanted to have a, a drop system for their sale. They had, you know, the tallest part of the building and these were dimensioned. Um, the design is intended to relate to, relate and co-mangle with the current scale of Grand Lake development. That does not overpower neighboring lots and overall friendages, views, shadows, et cetera. Again, just observations of what's been presented. On the Lake Avenue, we have three stories with a terrace setbacks on the upper floors. Maximize solar exposure, reduce views, minimize the impact of building heights on the public. We also have a four-story building, it's not a three-story. And we can analyze the subjective nature of already minimizing the appearance, the impact of building heights. Uh, item F, uh, they stated that they use the county standards for building heights. You're in the town limits, you gotta use the town standards for building heights. The site plan, age fifty-seven, refers to Rockies as a two-story building, it's a three-story building. I can go into details on how that third story happened, but that's irrelevant. Uh, conceptual massing on page sixty-four. Uh, the three Lake Avenue views alt show buildings one as four stories, which not three stories stated elsewhere. But it doesn't show anything beyond the six lots that are being described. It doesn't show the neighboring building to the west, which is the Western River, which is a two-story building. It doesn't show the two buildings. Well, yeah, two buildings, uh, the two blocks to the east, which Grand Lake Area Historical owns. Uh, so we have the snack bar, one-story building. We have the gallery, uh, addition to the Clockman House, which is a one-story building. And the nationally designated, uh, Clockman House Museum, which is a two, two-story building. I think of those conceptual designs, uh, drawings were to include those three additional lots, one across the street and two adjacent to the proposal. Uh, the mass of the buildings that are being proposed would be pretty evident. And in the applicant's statement, they say the hardship that they are experiencing that is impractical. They stated them required forty-foot height limitations. What about a three-story building, seventy-four? What about eight-foot ceilings instead of ten?
Um, sorry. Wrap up, cause we're at your three minutes.
I'm sorry.
We're at the three-minute warning.
I'll finish for you.
Uh, and then you, the factors you need to consider. Um, compatibility with proposed action with the surveillance area. Well, building one would tower over existing buildings along Lake Avenue, this would be the tallest. And I believe the only four-story building in town. Uh, you have to consider whether the, the action is in harmony with the character. Four-story, forty-five or fifty-one and a half-foot building is not compatible with anything around it. Uh, Eagle Spirit, Eagle's Landing are firmly shielded from views from the lake or anywhere else. Uh, what's the need? Why is a fourth, fourth story needed on building one? Impact on future development, setting quite a precedent here. And I know it's gonna say somewhere that your actions are not setting a precedent, but they are. And then, um, whether there are alternative, uh, designs possible, well, three-story building or shorter ceilings, uh, eight-foot ceilings will allow to turn to the forty-five, the forty-foot allowance. And then do consideration the town's comprehensive plan. So, comprehensive plans starting at age sixteen, talks about an authentic place. And preserving Grand Lake's unique small-town character. A building of this, building one, the massiveness is not compatible with the, uh, small-town atmosphere that town plan says we should be, uh, adherent to. So on behalf of Grand Lake Area Historical Society, we would recommend and request that variance is four, okay, do not.
I'm Dennis Humphries. I also remember the Grand Lake, uh, Area Historical Society. And I'll just follow up on Jim's, um, comments a bit. Um, as always, I think Scott Martin's done a masterful, uh, design and the preliminary status of all the setbacks and materiality and, and things of that sort. However, um, as the owner of the property where the snack bar is and the Clockman House. Um, we believe that a perfect evaluation would include elevations of those buildings in these wonderful renderings. To show the scale relationship between those buildings and the adjacent buildings. The Clockman House and the snack bar are not going away. They will remain in their current, uh, massing. And so in having that relationship shown truly in the elevations would be a very credible and important element of a presentation. And so I would request that, that that happen. Um, not related to the variances necessarily. We have concerns about the parking and the traffic that'll be generated on that alley. Um, because that, that alley is, uh, does serve, um, the museum and the gallery uh, for the Grand Lake Area Historical Society. Um, I have one question about variance number five in terms of group three. Uh, as it's being presented, it doesn't quite qualify, as I understand, as group three. It's just slightly below. So what group would that be?
Um, so it would fall into group four, which is the forty-five percent onsite open space requirement, based on the square foot ratios.
So, um, I just reiterate that our board, um, made a determination today that we would request. You deny, uh, variance four, which is the height variance. Uh, there was a reason why the thirty-five feet plus five feet was established in the first place. And we'd also, um, deny, request that you deny variance, um, uh, five and, uh, maintaining the building as it currently, uh, is designed. In, in terms of how it would qualify as group four. Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, my name's Bradley Hilton. Um, I'm representing, uh, ten twenty Grand Avenue, which is gifts unlimited. Um, first is a question that can maybe be addressed after public comments are done is where exactly are the height limitations measured from on, on a lot? I feel like we're getting some mixed messaging about that. It's kind of hard to find in code. So for example, is it from Lake Avenue or is it from the alley grade? Or is it from somewhere in between? Or how exactly is that, how's that measured in code? Um, as far as the height variance goes, which is really only variance I wanna comment on. Um, and we met Jim this morning and we actually, yeah, thanks for coming to talk to us. Shows a lot of good faith. Um, so you did mention the alternative plans that they have to, instead of adding a story on the Lake Avenue building. Um, then going ahead and doing three stories on Grand, Grand Avenue. Um, as far as, from our perspective, having a little old building right in the middle of all this. Um, to have an extra story on Grand Avenue would make us feel like we're even more kind of in the shadow of this project. Uh, Jim, if you mind if I show this, new large, I mean, just for us. Uh, we also, I also requested, and as a previous speaker, I mentioned, um, what our property would look like on the street in relation. Yeah, I'd like to see this from the rear as well, but this really helps. Um, so again, you know, it kind, it kind of is what it is here. We're gonna be something a little bit away. But already it does feel like we're kind of in the shadow of a couple big buildings surrounding us. So from our, um, from our perspective, um, it does feel easier to add, to lay down a new building rather than that actually us. Um, but we understand the way.
Perfect. I just thought I was gonna do that.
Couple other things I'll make note of, um, not exactly in relation to the variances, but we do have a pitched roof that slides off towards the west of our, on our building. And historically, that's all slid onto the mini golf course. And by the end of the spring, once everything slid, you know, the pile is about this tall and maybe five or six feet wide. It's a fair amount of snow that comes off of there. We understand that the distance, the beginning of the buildings here right in the center is gonna be about thirty-six inches maybe. We've got a foot off of our, our building, you know, foot off the new one. Um, Jim did say that he, they would put in some type of trench drain or some type of drain pan under there. That would then connect out to the storm drain on Grand Avenue. Um, I feel like that's a good solution, uh, but I would like, uh, the commission to just pay attention to that detail once, once that comes down there. Once, once that comes on the desk. Uh, last thing, the alley regrade. Um, it is, it's a little hard to read those documents that were in the, in the packet. And, and without them being explained, but Jim did provide, uh, just a picture here of where the alley regrade would start. Which looks like it's right on the edge of where the, um, Clockman House Gallery is. It would kind of start from there and go up the hill. Um, he did, he did ask if he could remove kind of this back corner of our lot, uh, where there's a rock wall, there's a bunch of aspen trees and it's kind of just like a high point in our lot. Um, he did ask if he could remove that at the same time so that it would all be graded out to the corner of his new building. We, we're kind of deciding whether to, um, accept that or not, or leave it as is. Uh, but we're kind of looking for more information on what that is all gonna look and feel like, uh, as well, so. Um, we appreciate your careful review of everything. Uh, don't be afraid to take your time on this. Change, change is definitely happening. Um, this project has been a long time coming. You know, we've all been staring at these places for a while wondering what's gonna happen. And I appreciate these guys for being so, uh, mindful about that you're gonna turn out. Uh, I think Scott, everything that you built recently has been, it's turned out great, so. Um, I have, I have shade on this one, but let's just, let's just take it slow and make sure to, um, to do it right. So, thanks everybody.
Okay. I agree with a lot of it, Jim. I'm Peter Remple, um, Global Five West Horn Road. And I like a lot of aspects of this project. I like the openness between the buildings and not just one big building, which is something I feared before. I don't like the height variance only because I've been in the building industry. And there's been a lot of times where planning commission not make variances from single-family dwellings who had a big burden to measure from the existing low grade and come up. And that's just one single-family dwelling. So a variance on a project this size is bigger gift, so to speak. Or if you're making a trade-off, what's the return on that? Um, I like the view of the project. I, the elevation using that comparison. I remember, I've been there all the time. When those buildings got built, I believe if you go back in the records from zoning. That's when they decided thirty-five feet or forty feet. They put that in there because people were freaking out that these buildings were gonna just carry right across the front and just walk off the lake from everything. So, you were saying, I, I remember that. I was a kid, but I heard the rumors and a lot of people didn't like that. I mean, I like the pitch roof better than the flat roof. That's just my opinion. And, you know. I, I, I do need to see that things are going forward and, you know, hope the project does work out. Jim does. Nice work. But, one question, I guess, and maybe it isn't pertinent at this point, but when you get to the point of, um, issuing permits, is there a timeline on this project? Is it five years? Ten years? Is there a deadline? And because it's gonna interrupt our main summer season. That there's construction going on there and then unfinished development. And so I would just suggest you figure out some guidelines for construction and have some input on, uh, scheduling and that kind of stuff. Because it's gonna affect the whole town during that construction process and, but how long will that be? Thank you.
Anyone else?
Great. Now I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. Uh, you can give the applicant a few minutes to respond to the comments that were made. And we'll turn it over to the planning commission to hear what the session.
Mr. Roy brought up a question about, um, the open space. How far can it be? I think the medical code reads, because I've been through this before. Yes, if, if it's not an adjacent property, then it can't be used as open space. And that's why I'm, why I'm asking for the variance. It's not an adjacent property. It's an offsite and that's what we're asking for the variance for. So if you deny it, we can't of course move forward with that, using it as open space. We have, with having an open space onsite. Um, and my reasons for not wanting to do that additional fifty-five hundred.
And my reasons for not wanting to do that additional fifty-five hundred square feet onsite is. For the reasons I gave you, there's parks on both ends of the project. There's a plaza going through the middle and, and the alternative is not as attractive as, as what we have to offer. We do give the variance and have the offsite. Park. And that's where that whole idea came from a year ago, when I started this process with you guys in this ring. And talked about it and everybody had something to say about that. So that's, to answer your question, it's supposed to be adjacent.
Thank you.
Yes, no problem.
I still like it, but.
Oh, no, I get it. It's just the idea I came up with and I like the idea. If you don't like it, that's fine. Everybody's entitled to their opinion. And so that's why I wanted to come up with the other, the other spaces using the open space. Of course, we do want the extra heights and the main reason is, is because we want to keep the massing off of Grand Avenue and put it on. The additional few feet. I understand when you're saying five feet, is it six and a half feet? What's a little bit, what's a lot? You know, if you don't want it, a foot and a half is a lot. If you, if I do want it, it's a little. And, and my cup's always half full. And so that's the way I look at stuff. It doesn't seem to be overwhelming to me for all of the ups and downs that we have throughout this community. With buildings sitting up on top of hills and, and, and the one-story structures that were built in the eighteen hundreds and early eighteen hundreds. You know, six feet doesn't seem like that to me, like that big of a deal to me that we're asking. If it's seven feet or four feet, whatever it ends up to be. The historical society's comments, I get it. They're a historical society and they're filled with the wonderful people that do a great job. We offered the. Open space to the historical society early on in this project and they did, said that they did not want it. They didn't want to deal with it. They're working on their, uh, other stuff to the west and, and which is fine. And I just, I wanted to see if they wanted to take possession of it instead of the town and, but they decided not to do that. As far as the massing goes, if you look at the diagram that's in the code, it shows tall buildings. Next to one-story buildings, next to two-story buildings, next to three-story buildings. It's the exact. Idea of what is in the code, in the diagram of the code. It has buildings all over the place like this. All over the place. It's what's delineated in the actual code and the diagram. And that's exactly what we have here. As far as the Riviera being a two or two and a half story building or one story building, it's for sale. It's going to get redeveloped. I get phone calls, not every month, but quite often from people, prospective buyers, realtors guide them towards, towards us. To say, what are you doing? Uh, because we're looking at the Riviera. We want to build some commercial, some condos. And that will be forty feet. They're going to come in here and ask for exactly the same stuff that I'm doing. So on that side, I understand that the other side of the property is going to stay in the historical society. When the Kaufman House was built and the Ochies was built, it was a vacant lot and there was teepees there. And I'm sure those people didn't like somebody building a hotel there. And so time goes on and things happen and now is our time to build this project. And we're trying to do the best we can with the tools that we're given and the code that we're trying to abide by. And that's where we're at. We support the historical society. We write checks every year. My witness. And, and everything that you guys do is worth it. I mean, I appreciate it. I don't have the time to help you guys out or I wouldn't. Maybe next year, maybe the year after, but I, I just can't do it right now. As far as group four variance, if we have to do, we will just add the commercial space back and say within the group three. We just add this space. Well, of course, we just put it back and have the additional square footage and we'll save it within the group three. We just did that recently per the planning commission meeting. The idea that we were given was given to us a few weeks back. And so to stay within that thirty-five percent of the space. And we don't need that variance, that kind of reliance. And we'll just put that commercial space back, which may already, which may already not be empty for a period of time. And we're just trying to do something that is, it was a good idea and we're trying to follow that idea. After the meeting today that we had, as far as the grading, they did give the ladies in the second row that line delineates where the grading starts. That grading will start basically at the northeast corner of the event center, which is adjacent to the historical society. Then it'll go to the west from there. So now I'd like to be sort of stand to the east unless there's utility work to do on it, we put back just like. So it won't affect any of your parking indoor or your, well, your parking area. As far as the back corner of the, of the gentleman that got up here last. The ideas we have is to remove that corner with the, with the trees and the rock. If they want the space, if they don't want it, we'll build a small retaining wall to hold that back from the regrade of the alley. Whether that be one foot to four feet or one foot to five feet or one foot to two feet. Whatever that is, if they want to keep that corner, then we'll just grade around it up to the property land and we'll build a retaining wall to keep that in there. And we can supply, they're going to let me know what direction they want to go. And if they do want us to take it out, then I told them today and I asked if we would. Do some re-landscaping on the little corner if they requested that. We said, sure, that's fine. Can you, can, if we take it down and you want to have some trees and garden plan or something. We're happy to do that. I told them we would furnish them a landscape plan prior to final. And make that part of the approval process so that everybody knows what we're telling them they're going to get so that that is done. And if they want to leave that corner alone, then we'll build a little retaining wall there and grade up to it and repaint it and be done with that. Peter's question at the very end about timing is very good. We talked about this with a meeting with the planning commission. It could take ten years. It's all going to have to do with, I don't think it will. But my guess is it's going to be three to five years for all the phases to be built. But one of the, the, the thing that I talked to the planning commission about was. There'll be a couple of phases that will go pretty quick. I don't know if that's going to be the event center buildings and the remodel will be lake house and the tree house. And then building one would be the first two phases or it would be one of the buildings on Grand and the event center, treehouse, lake house. But whatever that would be, we would have tracks and there would be like. The event center, lake house, tree house will be like one track or a parcel. Depends on how the county surveyor decides he wants to go with that. It'll be either a parcel or a tract and then we'd four or five tracts. Each one of the buildings will have its own tract and or parcel. Inside of that, there will be phases so that we can get CO'd on a different phases, just not like the hub and port crossing areas that go through the project. Per county ranks. And so that Mr. Rempel's office has the ability to CO buildings and units as we go through. But there'll be tracks and, and on those tracks we will have. Density set for square footage and height restrictions, which we will put on the plaque. And, and so that when, let's say, when we're dead, five years goes by, we've only got one building built. Somebody comes in and binds one of the parcels and they got a new project manager. He has to bring back into this board a new development plan just for that track based off of those square footages and those height restrictions. So if, let's say the, the building next to Rockies, which is the smallest of the four buildings. Let's say that's two condos. If we get the variance for the height, if not, it's going to be four condos or more. And then it'd be thirty-five feet. Then let's say it would be thirty-five with height restriction and. I'm just taking a number, twelve thousand square feet. And so as long as they were on plan and anytime in the future that would. Work along those requirements, then they would be allowed to build that building. And if not, they would have to come back to the planning process further, further, further that time. To build the new building when it's, when it's parcel eight or nine. So that's kind of what I feel this time down the road. I've done many projects in the last forty-five years. And, and basically when you do a larger project like that, you kind of designate. How much, how many square feet and how high and, and the set max, if there are any, things like that. That pre-construcative rig is there for future landowners. So that if we would sell one of those parcels. The group would sell one of those parcels, that new order that person would then have to come in. The plan of the building, just like we're doing right now, showing me the elevation, the colors, the textures. And materials and all of those things. And so that's how we regulate. The future building of those tracks. Phase one of the project is going to be the open space. And that's the first thing we're going to do, starting with the strings. Regreting the rail and regreting the open space. And in that to where it's open and then the tracks would be permitted separately. And there would be fencing put up along the open space so people can go through the open space down to. Like a lot of the buildings being built and be no different than being on a grand day. Excuse me, Grand Avenue and building out where they're seeing lots on Grand Avenue, saying that there'd be a fence there, just like it wasn't really the way it was. And, and that's something I wanted to bring up too. I know it seems like such a monster project, but this is actually no larger. As far as unit count than the Hump project, the original pipeline. Where the software and the Hump, it's, it, it seems like it's no certain days of it. But it's, it's not like the hotel ceiling is. And, and this. It's a hundred and fifty feet basically, not exactly, we're close to that, which is the length of the old boy. So if you're standing on the road and you're listening to people playing, I mean, you've got two little kiosks in there. From left to right, that's a hundred and fifty feet. That's the same distance as doing more to give yourself a perspective about what it is. That's pretty much all I've got. We would like to get the variances so we can proceed to put our plan and. Thanks, Jason.
We have, and going for three hours plus, so I guess two dots, one, maybe you get to take a five minute break. See, I was left some water. But two, I guess we should probably set a time limit to how long we want to go on with this discussion. And it may be appropriate to continue this meeting to, to continue this meeting to, to the next meeting to allow. At, at some point, we're. We're going to be getting tired and need to take a break, so. That's just my notes. Welcome discussion from the.
There are a lot of, a lot of issues to address and, and. I believe we're still, we're still having to take some time to. Confirm.
I don't think we're going to reach a resolution easily or quickly. If that's my rule, I'll stick, I'll stick it in there if that's the plan.
One, I think. I think that one thing that might be helpful is to hear a lot from the, from the public. Is there additional information that we need to see from the commission in order to help us make a decision? From the applicant, yeah. You know, I, I want, so I think that would be important to what's outlined, what goes, what, what helps us in rendering a decision. That they may be able to, to go back and provide that orientation.
Well, I know that architects know I'm willing to have a word back when you say that. But there are so many issues, those relationships, so the heights and the locations and the go for of the building. I think if we had a model. It will show a lot of the questions that we have. How much space there is, what relationship is between the building. I know they're getting expensive and I'm sorry about that, but everything is in the order, so. I, I would like to model, you know, with our project with each thing. With the elevation.
Yes, I would think that with a bird shot of a couple of people's sounds, it'd be really helpful to have more site point and showing the buildings around. Before they go, they're going to turn on mine and have it. A model built. I'm just saying, I, I think it would be helpful for me, as these hundred shows. The orientation of Rockies, what's up behind the event and how does it come in. So that would be. Before I, before I ask, you know, going to learn expensive, especially if you're going to start changing.
We have telephone poles, you know, those are good reference for height too, to have those included in the schematics. That's our only, one of our very high references.
Well, I think it deserves more energy than someone that's never, you know.
Yeah, I definitely think we're, we're leaning that direction. I just wanted to do. Provide them with a list of what we want to see in order to help me. And I'm hearing the rendering and you can get. The applicant can come back up, but I'm also hearing modeling, the 3D model. I mean, they, they have that ability. If they've gone this far. They can put at least confession into it. Into a 3D modeling.
So that's clarification on where we're measuring from, you know, based on Oautonic. Whether it's alleyway and the appropriate spot to measuring from. Personally just kind of looking at. Blue words, stuff like that, feeling a lot of the line of sight that you've come from Dartmouth Street. I don't know if that is any more appropriate height you're measuring from rather than the rear alleyway where. Kind of convoluted height that is kind of unknown to the walking and traveling pathway.
Yeah, I would almost like to see a rendering from, from. Where the blue sky bakery is, what does that probably look like at that corner and. You know, if you said they put that, the telephone poles and then, then you can walk out there and kind of run. Say, okay, so it would maybe kind of keep it up like that.
I kind of feel like I'm being asked to choose between four stories and two. Versus three and three.
Yeah, I.
And I'd like to see the three, what the three and three looks like from both sides.
Yeah, because it does kind of sound like what we're all talking about. Grant the variance, why are you going to put three stories down right now? So maybe that's a good point. What does three stories on the Grand Avenue look like?
Can you guys make sure to speak into your mics? They're having a hard time hearing you. Sorry. Yeah, so sorry.
You want us to repeat ourselves for the last.
No, no, that's okay.
Well, the whole thing, I mean, with these variances, we, we try to, what it is with the beat. With these variances, we're really moving, moving the preliminary development plan, is that correct?
No, all we're doing is giving variances so that you can do the preliminary development.
That, but that would come later.
Yeah, correct. Yeah, with a whole lot of. I think the one thing I would like to see too is maybe. A diagram showing exactly where that forty foot limit is so that. If the variance is approved, there's a, there's an exhibit. So this is the only area that can snort a forty foot pipe limit. So that we do have some guarantees. I mean, these are great drawings, but we don't have any guarantee that they're going to step up, that they're going to do the massing that they're showing, so. Need something that may be sets heights and it goes up the hill. The first so many feet from Lake Avenue, your, your height is limited to this and then you go up to this height, you go up to this height. How it steps and what those heights are so that we have some guarantee that those buildings are going to be a step.
As compared to the grade next to it, basically.
Yeah. And then, you know, I think too, we, we need to see something in the. In a resolution that would guarantee two stories on the Grand Avenue too. Because we don't have anything, if, if this variance were to get approved, we don't have anything that says. That they couldn't build the three stories, that they decided to do their preliminary development plan that way. So. Something for the, the developer to think about when they come back to us.
And, and Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, are you saying, so I know on resolution, I'm trying to remember because I've only done these the first time, but. I think in the resolution it talks about. Actually, I should just pull one up. You know, probably using it, me trying to guess what it says. But I think there was a state, there's a more generalized statement in there about. Kind of the representations made during the variance presentation and discussion by an applicant. Which could kind of speak to what you're saying, but it's not as specific.
Yeah.
So it sounds like you're looking for a little bit more spec, specific.
Yeah.
Parameters being established, which. Parameters being established, which could be part of a conditional approval recommendation at whatever point to, if we don't get the resolution exactly how you.
Correct, yeah. Other thoughts from the commission?
Yeah, I mean, there's just numbers on here, represents the height of the building and not that, well, I said it's a hundred and twenty eight feet, you know. We guys are really around the town, but we're watching that. You know, talking about, just talking to be, you know, exactly, the size of the building, that's all, you know, a hundred and twenty eight, a hundred and twenty two, and sixteen. And doesn't mean.
It's using that architectural base rather than like one hundred foot versus zero.
As it comes to us and then we hand the board, you have that's a kind of representative versus.
So so we invite the applicant back up. I think we totally can give you a list of what we would like to see. In addition, and then kind of get her.
Well, you can start out.
Your opinion on how long this is gonna take so that we do this hearing, okay, sir. If we don't, we'd have to then go back out with the notes.
Um, Scott, my image serials, forty-three Grand Canyon Road, four seven two one, Grand Lake, Colorado. Um, with respect to some of that additional information, um, Commissioner Burke, if, you know, three D rendering, model, video, that type of thing, set of physical models, it's something that's acceptable. I think it would be a lot easier for us to generate and a little bit more interactive as well. We'd be able to sit you down in one of the condos or across the street and be able to see, or at least whatever the computer can generate um, the feeling of the building. But you always have to remember that it's only as good as the computer can do it. Sometimes it's right, sometimes it's not as right. You have to take that with a grandson. Um, with a site specific, um, uh, you know, we can add telephone poles, we can put in more renderings, more scale figures, et cetera, to be able to give you a little bit of a better better idea of the uh, of how the building is supposed to be coming together. Um, height measurement, height measurements, we can easily make a little more clear. Those are architectural references. Show some feed, we try to try to, you know, use those things. It's the way the computer generates them. So we don't want to can't fudge them with it, puts them together, but we can definitely make it more clear. It's not a problem. Um, we can do lots of lines of sites, you know, throughout the town, through different portions, again, through that that three D model. Um, let's see, uh, the three stories and the three stories, um, that's gonna have to be a question that Jim wants us to explore that. We can, people look at it. Um, there is some provisions, I believe, in the code with respect to bulk plan step backs. So we would have to actually adhere to your bulk plan step backs, um, requirements. So the buildings would have to step back for your through the code, I believe. If I recall, you already have those in the code, so the building would definitely have that. And if you want to come up with anything more.
I guess you want to provide a point.
And that's gonna have you there.
Scott, I don't think, when I asked for a three and three, I don't, he doesn't have to redesign the lakeside. I think it's more a question of how would we react to another level on grandson.
Right. Yeah, that's the alternative. You know, if you don't get the variance, we'd like to see what if what does it.
Or how do you react to a three story building?
Right, yeah, yeah. Cause in my mind, I could just take one people out of the lakeside, pretty easy.
And again, this, as a developer, you you have to balance costs for profit and.
Been there, done that, you know.
These are, these are bigger games than I have idol.
So I just want to go back or I want to talk about where we've been since last April. Um, and basically, it started with me bringing in sets of plans that showed three story buildings and me having a meeting, not only the town staff in this room with Kim and John and um, the owners of the project and myself, and we went through all of these different scenarios. And so the numbers were running to try to figure out what the best way to proceed was. And uh, the most desirable thing that we came up with was it has a group when we met in here with the planning commission and the and the town board. And I want to go back and preface this by saying, I'm not saying that we're not gonna give you guys everything that you're asking for, cause we probably will. I mean, here we are. But the what they're gonna said, put on me is, let's go back to where we were. Let's go back to not lowering the alley. Let's go back to doing forty foot building. Let's go back to leaving the open space on site and build the biggest building that we can put on those sites. Forty feet tall, meet their thirty-five percent, go ahead and develop the Lake Avenue project down the road. And either sell off the lots on Grand Avenue and forget the plaza and build those buildings up to thirty-five feet and just go back to that and save all this money and time. And that's probably what they're gonna put to me. Now, I I do that stuff every day in my head and there's not that big of a difference. We're just trying to make a really cool thing here by what we presented to you guys by asking for these variances. And then the amount of work that we got in and the amount of money, which I understand development is not supposed to be about economics for the general public and we're the planning people. But it is economics for builders. And we've got close to two hundred thousand dollars already in planning fees and engineering and and structural engineering and uh, architecture and studies and all of the things. And now we're gonna spend more money to get somewhere before we even know what we have variances to do what we're trying to do. And that's what this meeting was all about. That's what the meeting is about last day. Was to sit in here and say, do you guys like these ideas? Here's the plans. And Williams said, yeah, we kind of like these ideas. Let's go down that road. We've gone down that road. We've waited for a new town manager, didn't work out. Town planner quits, didn't work out. Waited for a new planner. Here we are nine months later. And now we're getting postponed again, which means we're gonna miss this thing, which that doesn't matter to most of us. I get that. It does matter to us though, because we're the ones sitting here paying interest. So I have to weigh all of those things in a very short period of time. And the short que- the short answer is, can we have this back to you in about two to three weeks? I would assume so, clearly. If not, sir, to try to have another meeting. But it goes back to, we're gonna do all that and then we're in the same spot we are right now. Are we gonna get these variances? Cause if we don't, then we're going back to what I just described at the beginning. We're gonna do thirty-five foot tall buildings. Not because I'm trying to force it down somebody's throat, but that's what the code allows us to do. And that's what the commercial space in Grand Lake, the commercial ground, my platted town commercial lots, you're supposed to be able to build. That's what the code represents. That's why people buy stuff. So that's what we'll come in here to build. And then we'll just go back to that on the lakeside stuff. We were trying to do something way cool. And if we don't get the variances, we can't do that. It's just gonna be forty foot building. Minimum open space of thirty-five percent and whatever size building we can fit on there, remodel the event center. Cause we'll be right back in, just to, you can talk to Scott about this earlier this year when all these delays were coming. I said, let's just get to the event center and the lake house, treehouse done, we'll split off the amount of open space of thirty-five percent we need for that. We'll re redo boundary adjustments on the other lots, do some preliminary plans and sell them off and go on down the road. And that may be where we're heading if we don't get the variances. Because we're just trying to do something nice, because we can do something that's part of the code. And 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 put it out there and just build it and be done with it. But that's not what we were trying to do with the offsite open space, give some folks a park, build the plaza. It's not all about money. It's about a really great, great plan. So we'll get back with you right away. I guess schedule whatever meeting you can schedule within your guidelines and we'll try to get your stuff back. But short of that, I want you to know the process that I'm gonna have to be going through with the owners in the next a few days and decide where we are. And the alley regrade may not happen and we may not do all the things that we were trying to talk about. Cause there has to be a point where we gotta stop. And I understand it's a hell of a lot of information for you guys.
Yeah, I I hopefully I think this is a rejection that we're.
Well, I am kind of taking it that way. I am kind of taking.
I think we want some more information.
We've got ample notice this to try to get these. I stood in here four weeks ago and tried to get you guys. And you said it's not a public hearing. So now we have a public hearing. We get all this money put together and now we're gonna do it again and we're gonna hear the same testimony. People that don't like it and people that, nobody ever comes in to say, I like a project. They just come in to argue against it.
Okay, so so all we're saying is right now, we're not saying no to the project, but it is ten o'clock at night. We're not ready to make a decision. We're asking for a little bit more information. This is the largest thing that's happened in the downtown.
I'll let you guys know and we'll go down that road.
I appreciate.
Five, four nineteen. Which date would work, five or nineteen of February?
At this point, it doesn't matter because I know your schedule all, so you guys just pick and we'll get on.
Fifth is our normal.
And that way, the public hearing will be continued to a date certain.
Yeah, so we'll have.
And not be approached by the public notice. Um, but the regular meeting notice will obviously.
I have a question. So does all this additional information need to be two weeks prior?
No, that's what we're saying, that this being continued to a date certain being February fifth is that this public meeting is being continued, right?
So public comment still can happen at that end.
It will be expected.
Well, we know that. Sorry, we we have close to public hearing.
That's what I thought. So there's no more public.
There's no more public comment. It's just a finding a discussion. But the public is honestly welcome to attend. Have you ever.
I've seen this, so I'm scheduled only in February, but then within forty-five.
And there are no items that are on the agenda for our next schedule. No, no. Our next scheduled meeting is next Wednesday, correct, on the fifth corner. We have, we have no other items to discuss on the schedule for the. So if if the commission would like to not have one, staff does not have items for you for that meeting.
And in order to expedite our process on the fifth, are we able to have like that decided amongst ourselves here to discuss this further or that not?
It needs to be an open.
Yeah, they are.
I know that it's something that we've done in the past that maybe, you know, may not want to do it again. But in the past, we we asked, we know to submit seven sets of drawings so that we could each one have twenty-six files, whatever it is, so that we can really understand. Uh, or maybe even just have one or two sets here that we as mission members could come in and check out for a couple of days to review. I think that would be very.
And I would, I would think that a couple of copies, remember, um, missionaries that right now, we're just looking at the variances. So so those sets of plans will be expected to be modified and changed before they get to that predevelopment.
That's why we asked for a new set to be drawn correctly.
Yeah.
So if there's one you can check it out, just look at, you can start with the money.
All right. So I do have an open motion. So I have a motion to continue it until February fifth. Do I have a second? All those commissioners and figure, I have those proposed. A motion passes, we continue this till February fifth, six thirty P M.
Thank you, guys. I do have a copy of you. Wait.
Even that side would help.
Are we adjourned? I was like, what happened? I think we went. Thank you.